I'd even like to call the meeting back to order and I'll ask Madam Clerk for a roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
Here.
Mr. Mills?
Here.
Mr. Oden?
Here.
Ms. Rella Spurgeon?
Here.
Mr. Mayor?
Here. You'll all please rise for the flag salute. Dana, if you'll lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight's invocation is by a gentleman who I actually spent most of my weekend with, oddly enough. I was with him Friday night and I joined him again on Sunday. He is one of this community's finest citizens and I refer to, of course, Rabbi Jordan Aufsire from Temple Isaiah. Rabbi, thank you so much for coming down this evening.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Oh God Creator, transcendent and eminent, surely when you created Palm Springs, you had a very good day. Surrounded as we are by blue skies, by stars, by magnificent mountains, a bounty of blessings every day of our lives. May we at this season of goodwill and peace for all, may we guardians of this legacy of Palm Springs dedicate ourselves to restore, to enhance, all that this place is and has for us, for the least of us in all of our diversity and humanity, so that when our time comes, we shall restore this to our children and our grandchildren, even as you intended it to be, a beautiful legacy, a jewel, a precious gift for this season and for every season. Amen.
Thank you, Rabbi. There are no presentations scheduled for tonight's meeting and I'll ask Madam Clerk for report on the posting of the agenda, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the agenda you had before was posted on December the 13th. There were additional materials provided to the council on items 12, 13, 16. You should have received those by fax and a copy is at your desk tonight. Additionally, tonight at your desk, you should have several items regarding item nine. Also, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, on your agenda as the last item of business, you do have the time to select your mayor pro temp. Typically, the council selects that as their first order of business before they start on their legislative calendar. So if it would please the council, I would request that you move that to your first order of business.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
And also, item number B on the Community Redevelopment Agency is being withdrawn by the city manager. Item B, CRAB, Lake Boy.
I'll turn to Mr. Alshire, our city attorney, for closed session report, please.
Yes, council needs to meet in closed session. The items listed on the closed session agenda, first item, real property negotiations involving the Sunrise Village Mobile Home Park, we gave a status report, no action was taken. Second item involving 20 acres in Murray Canyon, we gave a status report, no action was taken. Third item, Ruddy's General Store, real property negotiations concerning the lease of that property, gave a status report, no action was taken. The fourth is real property negotiations involving a leasehold interest with Bill McQuethy, gave a status report, no action was taken. Litigation matter involving Desert Water Agency was not discussed. Litigation matter involving Eldorado versus City of Palm Springs, we gave a status report, no action was taken. Exposure to litigation in three cases, we discussed exposure in one matter, we gave a status report, no action was taken, we did not discuss the other two. The city attorney and police chief evaluations were not conducted. Thank you.
Mr. Alshire?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Oden?
Just a question on the report on the ready, is there any additional information on that one?
No, the, we discussed the continuation of that lease agreement and there's no official action that was taken.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Alshire. Based on city clerk's comments, we'll take the pro temp issue at this point in the agenda and open it for nominations for pro temp.
Mr. Mayor?
It's Hodges.
I would like to nominate Ron Oden.
Thank you.
Second?
Second by Mr. Mills. Any additional nominations, otherwise I undertake a motion to close the nominations.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to close by Mr. Mills, second by Ms. Rella Spurgeon. Voting on the motion before the body, Ron Oden for mayor pro temp. All those in favor say, roll call? You may say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Five oh. We'll now have the rotation of the pro temp. Round of applause for the outgoing pro temp, Gina Rella Spurgeon. Now, a round of applause for the incoming pro temp, Mr. Ron Oden. Ron does not pack light, by the way. Official changing of the names. A round of applause for the city clerk. Nice. Lot of love in the room tonight, didn't there? Beautiful thing. All right. With that, we will now convene as the Community Redevelopment Agency remaining in session as the city council. First order of business is a joint public hearing. Item A is the Burnett Companies Disposition and Development Agreement, otherwise known as a DDA. I'll turn to Mr. Ready for his staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is a housing development that hasn't had its genesis back in the year 2000. We forged this together and I would ask Mr. Raymond to give the details of the staff report. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman, members of the agency. As Mr. Ready said, this is a project that we've been working on since February of the year 2000 and it's a disposition development agreement for about 41 acres, actually now it's about 42 acres with Burnett Development Company of Newport Beach. What Burnett has proposed, and there's a track map on, for action by the city council later tonight, is in combination with the previous track map that was approved on the, back in May, housing development, a single-family housing development of about 400 homes up at the north end of Sunrise, north of San Rafael. There's several parcels and I'll just walk you through the transaction. Actually, what it is, is that the redevelopment agency is selling the land to Burnett on the west side of Sunrise and there's two parcels. There's a 22.21 acre parcel that was conveyed from the City of Palm Springs to the agency in July of last year for the purposes of this DDA. And then there's another 19.17 acre parcel that's being created by a lot line adjustment that you're approving tonight as part of this action. An action that you took two weeks ago, which was a lease amendment with Santiago Sunrise Corporation, sort of disencumbers the lease on that night, takes the lease off of that 19 acres and frees it up for us to convey it to Burnett. So the total sale price is a million and eighty, a million and eighty thousand dollars, which is divided, because there's different ownerships, the city previously owned the 22 acres on the north and there was a differential in the appraised value of the two different parcels and the city would receive by the agreement with the agency from last year, 465,000 and 615,000 would go to the low and modern income housing fund, which owns the 19 acres that's adjacent to the mobile home park. In addition, there's a new parcel that's been created, we refer to it as Parcel S and it's not a labeled parcel on the track map, but it is at the northwest corner of the Coyote Run Apartments. And originally 10 years ago when Coyote Run was developed, it was intended to be a park, a public park, to serve both Coyote Run and the surrounding development. Staff felt that given the nature of the Burnett project around it and the Coyote Run project, that it was not appropriate to have a public park sort of located right smack dab in between two private developments without really good public access and proposed as part of the Coyote Run Expansion Project, which you approved in July, moving the park site out to Sunrise. Burnett picks up about half of that old park site, and we're calling it Parcel S, in return for a contribution toward the creation and on the construction of a new park. It's what they call Vest Pocket Park, it's a very small park on Sunrise, but it would be a public park located between the existing Coyote Run, just south of, there's a Desert Water Agency well site and then it sort of would be part of the, be next to the expansion of the Coyote Run. So there's, it's actually a trade, the Parcel S is actually a trade in land value for the park improvements. There is one thing that we wanted to add as part of the action in the resolution. Section 6.2 of the agreement is a transfer provision and ordinarily we have, that's a standard part of the agreement, that the agency would, that agency has a right to approve the transfer of a DDA or an agreement from one developer to another. Ordinarily, that would happen, you know, much later in a project where developers unable to build it, but Burnett has always said that they are land planners and developers and they are not home builders and that they would, at the point that the project was ready to go forward, they would sell the project to a home builder. They have negotiated an agreement with a national home builder and it's K. Hovnanian Companies. They are a Fortune 1000 company with about $2 billion in annual revenue. They've been around since 1958 and they've constructed more than 75,000 homes. They operate in the northeast, the mid-Atlantic, Texas and in California. They build a variety of product from entry level to luxury homes and about 30% of the homes that they build in California are what are called active adult communities, similar to Del Webb, to Sun Lakes, and that is actually what they're proposing here. So it would be, become an active adult community. And so what we propose is that added to the resolution would be, subject to staff verification of the financial capacity and the other provisions of section 6.2, that the council would, or the agency, would approve the transfer of the project to K. Hovnanian Companies as part of the approval of DDA. And that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, John. To the agency or council, any questions on staff report before we open the hearing?
Mr. Mayor, the new home builder that will be coming in, are they taking over the entire project or just a portion of it?
No, they're taking the whole thing.
They're taking the whole thing. And do we have any idea what price range these homes are going to?
When we met with them about five or six weeks ago, I think they were talking about the smaller product in the 205,000, 210,000 range, up to about 280 to maybe over 300, you know, with amenities and with upgrades and that sort of thing.
You also might want to mention again where this is in the city, because I think that's important.
This is, this is at the very north end of Sunrise. It's right where Sunrise ends. On one side is the, it actually wraps around the Palm Springs Country Club and the east map that was approved in May. And the west side that we're talking about tonight, as far as the land sale, is on the west side of Sunrise, north of the Sunrise Village Mobile Home Park and, but it's, if you drive up to the end of Sunrise, it's right there on both sides of the, of the street. So it's a, it is a great testament to the faith of the market in Palm Springs. I don't think even two or three years ago, we would have talked about 200 and 300,000 dollar homes in that far north in Palm Springs. And they, this is a billion dollar, two billion dollar company that feels that they will be able to build and sell 400 or more active adult homes in that area.
Seeing none, this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the council or the agency on item A, the Burnett Company DDA, please come forward at this time.
Good evening, sir. If you'll give your name and address to the city clerk. Welcome, you have five minutes. The clock will step down from five.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Redevelopment Agency. My name is Jason Lee, I'm with Burnett Companies, who's the sponsor of this item here and also the future tenant map that you'll see at city council. I'm only here, here to answer any of the questions you may have that Ms. Raymond hasn't answered already. We are looking at price ranges in the low twos to 300s is what K. Hovnanian has suggested to us and it is going to be an active adult community.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the council or the agency on item A? Very good, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and we'll turn to the council and the agency for their action if they're so desired. There are three resolutions, two for the agency and one for the council. Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Oden?
I will move the three resolutions.
Second?
Motion for approval on Mr. Oden and second by Mr. Mills. Additional comments or questions? Very good, seeing none.
Mr. Mayor, may I just make a comment? I think this is just a really exciting project to be put in this particular area of town. And actually, maybe people looking for this type of a facility won't have to go down valley and have the name of Palm Springs, but can actually be in Palm Springs.
Any further comments? There's a motion and a second. I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Mr. Chairman, there are three resolutions, two are for the agency, one is for the city council. The first resolution has language that the director recommended for revision. I assume that is included in the motion and the second?
Yes. Yes, it is.
Take your and second concur. Yes?
Thank you. Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Rella Spurgeon?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye. It's five oh, it's deemed unanimous. We'll now adjourn as the city council and remain in session as the Community Redevelopment Agency. First order of business before the agency is public comments. Anyone here wishing to address the Community Redevelopment Agency? We will have public comments later on tonight for the city council, please come forward at this time. Public comments are three minutes and again, the clock will step down from three. Good evening, sir.
Sorry.
Oh, Tom. Is there anyone wishing to address the council during public comments? Very good, seeing no public comments for the agency, we'll close that. We'll turn now to the approval of the minutes of the November 6th and the November 26th meeting. Agency, what's your pleasure?
So moved, second.
Motion for approval by Ms. Rella Spurgeon and second by Ms. Hodges. Any amendments, changes or modifications? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It's deemed five oh, unanimous. Under our legislative calendar, item B is an amendment, number one, to the agreement with Geiger LLC. And I'll turn to Mr. Ready for staff.
Withdrew it, withdrew it.
Mr. Chairman, the city manager withdrew that item.
Thank you, sorry. We'll withdraw that then. We'll then adjourn as a CRA and reconvene as city council. First order of business is public comments. I have a number of requests to speak here. I'm going to ask that we form a line to move this as quickly as possible. You each will have three minutes and if I call your name, then I'll call three at a time. We'll start with Billy Ray King, followed by Lorraine Berthelsen, and by Lee Morkus, please.
Not right now.
Billy Ray? Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I come to United in sincere hopes of getting my business started, which has been here for two months now. I did have some copies with the city court, if anyone would like to see. I was issued the business license. I went through all the professional steps I was supposed to go through with the insurance, all the safety, everything that I was supposed to have done and I'm still having a, pardon me, please, I got a little sore throat. I'm still having a little bit of a difficult time getting open and I don't know why, I've complied with everything, so I'm kind of in the dark on this. If someone could enlighten me, I would really appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Lauren, if you'll come forward. Berthelsen?
Berthelsen, yes.
Thank you, sir.
I know it's a mouthful.
No, it's fine.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council. I'm here tonight just to urge you, you've got an item on your agenda, number 12, I believe, to award the contract for the convention center architect and I just want to urge you to push that through and give some, you know, some alacrity behind that. It's important to our city to get that project underway as soon as possible so that we can be up and operational for the 2004, 2005 season and it's important all across the board for properties, my size, 12 rooms, all the way up to large properties. So that's just my thoughts on that and I appreciate your cooperation.
Thank you, sir. Lee Morkus, followed by Todd Sand and Robert Van Eton, please.
Thank you, council. Good evening, happy holidays. I'm also here to speak out on behalf of awarding the contract for the architect for the convention center at the earliest possible moment. It's important to have drawings and designs that we can show potential clients to a valley. They're normally booking two to three years in advance and without having designs and layouts that we can show our prospective clients, it certainly will compromise our sales efforts. Additionally, it is critical that it be open in time for the 2004 season. If it could be opened by October, that would be even better. October nationally is the largest convention month in America. I know our numbers are slightly skewed towards February, March and April, but anything we can do to expedite that project would be more than gratefully appreciated by our entire hospitality community. As a sidebar, thank you for the wonderful parking structure. I was delighted to be a small part of that, proud of the association and I think it's wonderful what we've accomplished with a public-private partnership, getting that structure done. It came out far better than I ever anticipated and thank you for all of that and certainly the members of the city over here that were involved, I'm grateful for that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Todd Sand, Robert Van Eton and Thomas Van Eton.
Thank you. I've come to the meeting tonight in the hopes that I can voice a concern of something that's coming, coming up, coming up soon in some format, I'm not exactly sure what the format is going to be, but regarding the homeless center, the homeless daycare center as part of the Sunrise project. And as a resident in that immediate area, it concerns me very much, it concerns me very much the appropriateness of that type of a project in a, in a residential area. So I'm hoping that, that the council will look, you know, long and hard at, at this project and I just feel like it's not appropriate in a residential area and I just hope that each council member would, you know, consider that in light of your own neighborhood, if this project were, were being recommended for your own neighborhood, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Robert Van Eton, followed by Thomas Van Eton and Bright, Bright Zo, Weedic, Weeda?
Good evening, Robert Van Eton, Palm Springs. I would like to comment on the Crossroads Homeless Daycare Center, part of the proposed expansion of the DAP. I am concerned about both rights and responsibilities as they pertain to everyone involved. But before I address those issues, I would like to state that my partner, Thomas, and I fully support programs which address homelessness, as long as they have been well thought out or effective, address documented actual needs rather than emotionally perceived needs, have been closely looked at from a cost-benefit viewpoint and take into consideration the impact on the community as a whole. In my opinion, none of these conditions have been met in this case. In an attempt to educate myself, I spent a few hours on the internet. Here are some of the things I learned. According to the National Institute of Mental Health and the Federal Task Force on the homeless, roughly one-third of the homeless suffer from serious mental illness. Homeless individuals with mental illness suffer primarily from schizophrenia, major depression or bipolar disorder. A significant number of the homeless also abuse alcohol and/or other drugs, which further exacerbates their situation. According to the homeless task force, at any one According to the homeless task force, at any one time, we have between 200 and 250 homeless in our city. That means if this project is approved in its current form, we will be inviting 65-plus seriously mentally ill into a neighborhood a few hundred feet from a middle school and across the street from elderly retirement communities with no provisions to effectively address the mental health problems. The results of this invasion will be, in my opinion, both traumatic and devastating for many of the people in the neighborhood on an ongoing basis. I find it incredulous that Dr. McKinney and Andrew Green told the council several months ago that the site they were proposing on Sunny Dunes was the ideal location because it was in a commercial neighborhood in the area where many of the homeless congregate, and now they are saying that the ideal location is in a primarily residential neighborhood next to schools and the elderly and two bus trips away from the area where many of the homeless congregate. I have attended three presentations by the DAP and the homeless task force, and am extremely disappointed that the issues I have raised above were not adequately addressed or were not addressed at all. It appears to me that the Crossroads Homeless Daycare Center component of the project was ill-conceived with totally inadequate staff work supporting it. The impact on the neighborhood has been totally ignored, and the initial and ongoing financial costs have not been addressed. I'm therefore totally against this component of the project until the above issues are addressed and satisfactorily resolved. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Thomas?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Thomas Van Eton, and you have my address on file. Congratulations, Mr. Oden, on your appointment as mayor pro tem. Janie, thank you for the work that you did in that position the last year. I too am here to speak to the Crossroads Homeless Daycare Center, and I think that the basic problem I have with the homeless daycare center is the attitude I get from the major players involved with the entire Vista Sunrise project on the Desert AIDS Project campus. It appears to me, when we have had public forums on the subject, overwhelmingly, the people have said they don't want the homeless daycare center located on the DA campus for some very good reasons. As soon as an individual displays a negative feeling about the homeless daycare center, one is confronted with an entirely nasty reaction from some of the key players. Citizens are labeled as the enemy, causing trouble, not wanting to provide people with services for HIV infection, and in some cases, being accused, such as myself, of running a campaign to stop contributions to the Desert AIDS Project. How do you combat this kind of reaction from the people who you are trying to have a serious dialogue with on a subject that many of us are passionate about? Forgive the sarcasm here, you know, we are filled with predigested platitudes from Andrew Green on the moral responsibility of taking care of all of God's children, and I have a little problem with Andrew Green's message. Andrew Green seems to be wearing many hats. He is an ordained minister of the Episcopal Church. He sits on the school board. He sits on the board of the homeless task force, and he sits on the board of directors of the Desert AIDS Project. So I don't know whose interests, you know, he's representing, and I resent the guilt trip that he lays on people when he comes up here and during a prayer, as he did a couple of weeks ago, reminds us of our responsibilities to take care of unfortunate people. I have to add, however, that I have never heard one citizen voice and opinion that the homeless should not be cared for. If anything, many of the citizens who try and speak are involved in many social justice issues in our community. The Crossroads Homeless Daycare Center simply does not belong at Vista Chino and Sunrise, near a middle school, a senior center, and residential neighborhoods. It's quite simple. Move it to an area where there will be no danger to citizens. That's all we ask. We are trying to work with Denise Goolsbee in sessions designed to hear other ideas, and to date, we have been unsuccessful in establishing a constructive meeting with her, Andrew Green, or John Brown.
Thomas, try to come to close.
I will come to close immediately. We are being told by some that this is a done deal, and the city council will approve it with almost certainty, and I'm afraid if that happens, then democracy goes down the tube once again, and I pray that you will listen to both sides of the story. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Bridgette ZaWida? Is that good?
ZaWida.
ZaWida, thank you.
Good evening.
Followed by Bruce Bouchur, and then Lori Travis, please.
My name is Bridgette ZaWida, and you have my address. Good evening to all, and also here to speak on behalf of the Sunrise Vista Daycare Center.
Pull the mic down. Thank you.
There you go. I take quite a little bit of a different tact, and it kind of goes into play with what was presented tonight with Burnett LLC, which I'm happy to hear, that the north end, to me, is the gateway to the city of Palm Springs. And you enter Palm Springs, you enter from the north end down 111, and I think that would be a wrong representation to put a homeless daycare center on the north end of Palm Springs. You just recently are putting a new visitor center in that you purchased that's also on the north end of Palm Springs. I don't think that goes hand in hand with visitors coming in. I believe there's a daycare center need for homeless people, but I believe it would be better put in between Cathedral City or in conjunction with Palm Springs, because you don't need to bus people in to feed them at a center that is, what, 15 blocks away for most of the places where they congregate. So I believe that you need to revisit that and probably have the homeless task force find a better solution in maybe several different areas where the homeless can be fed. I think we have a social responsibility, but I don't think we need to put it next to the schools or the residential community, nor in the gateway to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce Bouchur, Lori Travis, and Maureen Lim, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. How are you? There's two items on the agenda that I'd like to speak about tonight. The first one is number 10, the Parks Beautification and Tree Program Policy. As Chair of Parks and Rec, we have been working on that for the last couple of months of meetings. Staff has done, I think, a great job, and I just urge the council to approve that policy to help establish guidelines for future for all of our parks. The other item is item number 15, the Park Springs Skate Park, and I might add, and Swim Center renovation. We all know this one's been around for a while. Staff, you know, the council, along with the city manager's office, has worked their due diligence. We're trying to push this forward. It's an important facility that we currently have. It's the only Olympic-sized pool in the whole Coachella Valley. It's another facility that, once is completed with the addition of the skate park, we're providing an excellent facility for our kids, and I just urge you to move forward with that project. And hats off to the parking structure, and have a nice holiday.
Thank you, Bruce. Lori Travis, followed by Maureen Lim, followed by Marjorie Casagrande, please.
Good evening. I wondered if we could, we had a pre-arranged order. Is that at all possible?
Whatever you think would best serve your needs. If you've got a sequence that you want to work from, let's just line them all up, and let's bring them forward. And again, now you'll have to give the name and address to the city clerk, because I'm not reading off the cards.
My name is Sally Watt Sanji, and my address is 1430 Fiesta Road in Palm Springs. Okay. Hi, my name is Sally Watt Sanji, and I've lived in the city of Palm Springs for 50 years, and over the past 26 years, I've also been employed as an elementary school teacher with Palm Springs Unified. I came here tonight because I felt that I really needed to say that I am very strongly opposed to a contract with Palm Springs Aquatics. If a contract is awarded, it will truly be a spatial hardship to the other aquatics programs, especially during high school swim season. This year, the Piranha Swim Team had their 30th anniversary, and for those 30 years, the Piranhas have been swimming at the same current location, and we've always had a very positive relation with the city. According to our contract with the city also, the Piranha Swim Team is the official representative to Southern California swimming, and our members include children from ages five years old to adults who are pursuing health and athletic competitions. We currently have around 70 swimmers, and the majority of these kids and adults are residents at Palm Springs. Since our recent transition to a new head coach and assistant swim coach, the number of our swimmers have increased. When the transition occurred in the late summer, early fall, we experienced a 30% increase in our swimmers, and in addition, as a result of publicity we have received from the Desert Sun and because of our activities of our swim coaches, our numbers also continue to grow. This by comparison to recent years in which our numbers have dropped under the old head coach, which was Coach Si, and this summer, the majority of the high level of competitive swimmers left to train in other places and drove roughly two hours a day for practice. Maybe we, you need to ask yourselves, why did these swimmers all leave? And the Piranhas host meets every year, and these meets bring in swimmers from throughout Southern California, Nevada, and Arizona. In our most recent meet, the Agua Cali Anti-Invitational was held on November 23rd and 24th. 500 swimmers plus their families came to Palm Springs and competed. These three annual events that the Piranhas host in Palm Springs generates approximately 2.3 million for Palm Springs and the surrounding area, which roughly brings in 3,000 to 4,000, 3,000 to 5,000 people in attendance. We are proud to host these meets, which generates revenue to our city. My daughter Chelsea is a high school age swimmer, and our family has been active with the Piranha Swim Team for the past eight years. I am a past board member and president of the board, and I needed to say that as a teacher, I have really been appalled by Coach Si's lack of respect and verbal abusiveness to swimmers, and the majority being the senior group, which my daughter was. She was injured terribly quite a few times, actually, two serious times, as well as some other minor ones, and she was out of the pool for quite a few months. Thank you very much for listening to my concerns, and I trust that you will listen very open-mindedly tonight and take appropriate action by not issuing a contract to Palm Springs Aquatics. Thank you.
Your next speaker, please.
My name is Michelle Burnell. I live at 300 North Sunrise Way, apartment number 23. Mr. Mayor and city council members, thank you this evening for giving me the chance to speak. I am the Piranha's assistant coach. I'm here to talk about the proposal by Palm Springs Aquatics and how it would be a great hardship on Piranha. Piranha Swim Team has been a community athletics program for 30 years of swimmers from five years old to triathletes. Our program has 75 active swimming members, and the numbers are growing every month. The majority of our members on our team are Palm Springs residents. As of right now, we have our swimmers in the water from 4:00 to 7:00 PM with an average of 5 to 7 swimmers per lane. When high school season starts, we will have less space because of high school and lap swim. Cathedral City will be taking eight lanes. Right now, Palm Springs Aquatics wants three. We'll be left with four when we have 75 swimmers in the water. This will put us to nine to 11 swimmers per lane due to less lane space. Also, on Mondays and Wednesdays, it is even worse because we have to also have lap swimmers in the pool, and Palm Springs Aquatics, where they only have 20 swimmers on their team, will have three lanes, and we will have two. Palm Springs Aquatics, on average, has 10 kids per day over a four-hour time slot with five kids in an early session and four to six in an evening session. If Palm Springs Aquatics gets approval on this proposal, Piranha will have too many swimmers per lane, and we will not be able to keep growing in numbers for community members. This is the largest problem and hardship that I can see. Also having Palm Springs Aquatics on deck at the same time as Piranha has made a terrible situation for our younger members that are novice and just feeling comfortable in the water. This is because of the unprofessional outbursts Coach Si has demonstrated. These outbursts have been screaming and swearing on deck at his senior swimmers, and because of this, our younger swimmers are scared to swim towards his side of the pool when these outbursts occur. The situation is a hardship for Piranha because we have Palm Springs parents not wanting to train at the same time as Coach Si for their kids' own safety and well-being. I hope that the community will see that the proposal to have Palm Springs Aquatics and Piranhas not be in the pool at the same time is a good one and well-being for an organization that has had a 30-year good standing history in the community. Thank you very much for your time.
Dr. Gerald Lim, 71595 Sahara Road. Members of the council, how has this situation come about? In June this year, in response to general unhappiness about Coach Si's repeated incidents of chair throwing, explosive emotional outbursts on deck, and other issues, the Piranha Board voted not to renew his contract. In exchange for the Piranhas agreeing to our then-president, Mr. Bruce Bouchur's request to allow Coach Si to continue to coach a few swimmers for the Junior Olympics and Junior Nationals and pay his expenses there, Coach Si signed a contract agreeing not to be present on deck at the same time as the Piranhas, knowing that he had already applied for pool time for PSA in violation of the contract. Because of the association between PSA and Parks and Rec Chairman Bruce Bouchur, the Parks and Rec Commission and staff have treated the Piranhas with extreme bias. Director Mike Sell has twice refused to place us on the commission's agenda to discuss our concerns. Staff investigating charges of profanity on deck by Coach Si were directed not to interview any Piranha witnesses, with the result that they were unable to substantiate the charges. What a surprise. They have taken lanes away from us to accommodate PSA, forcing us to squeeze up to twice as many swimmers to a lane as PSA while allowing them to swim essentially for free, only collecting rent once in September when we raised the issue, and nothing since. And now the proposal is for them to pay $75 a month, one quarter of what we are paying. They are certainly not using one quarter of the number of lanes we are using. When Vicky Old Team proposed contract options for the commission to consider on October 9th, Chairman Bouchur made it clear that the proposed times were not to his liking, and surprise, surprise, Director Mike Sell's current proposal includes a schedule exactly as he wanted. The commission directed staff to prepare a short-term contract to be reevaluated at the start of high school swim season, which we see has now been changed. As an official in the PSA, Government Code Section 1090 on contractual conflicts holds that Mrs. Bouchur has a direct financial interest in the proposed contract, and the California Attorney General's Office considers Mr. Bouchur's financial interest to include his spouse's interest. Because his son swims with PSA, the proposed contract will also reduce Chairman Bouchur's share of pool rental by at least $2,000 a year, constituting another direct financial interest in the contract under the personal financial effect rule. As he is a member of a multi-member commission, Section 1090 provides an absolute prohibition against any contract which he has a financial interest, even if he disqualifies himself from the discussion and vote, or even if he were to resign his position on the commission. However, he has in fact participated in the discussion and voted over our repeated objections and influenced other commission members outside of commission meetings, activities which are prohibited by law. Because of these violations, which are felonies, any such contract is void and unenforceable, but don't take my word for it. Check it out for yourself in the handout materials I'll be giving out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. Lori Travis, 1580 Sonora Court, Palm Springs. My husband, myself, and my six-year-old daughter all swim on the Piranha Swim Team, and I'm here because I would like to express why we strongly oppose shared use at Palm Springs Pool with the Palm Springs Aquatics and why this creates a hardship for the Piranha Swim Team. There are many reasons why the Piranhas did not renew Coach Si's contract. I was a master swimmer for Coach Si on and off since he first came to Palm Springs. I was extremely unhappy with his unreliability, so I would quit the team many times and swim by myself and rejoin, hoping that things would get better. I have witnessed firsthand his explosive anger directed at his swimmers. This would make me feel very uncomfortable and sad for his swimmers. My daughter Faith is six and would not swim for Coach Si. She saw him throw chairs and yell consistently at the kids. Since the Piranhas have hired Coach Todd Liebeck, she has swam consistently two to three times per week and had a great time. I also started swimming consistently since Todd started and have swam four to five mornings per week on a regular basis. In the past couple of weeks, there have been two episodes of explosive behavior and anger on deck while I have been there. One was Coach Si coming across the pool deck to yell at Coach Todd about swim lanes, when he could have just talked in a reasonable tone of voice and asked for us to move so he could have more lanes, or whatever it was he wanted. Another morning, a Palm Springs Aquatics swim parent came across to again yell at Coach Todd in front of us swimming. While we were trying to get the workout from our coach, he was disrupted and couldn't give us a workout because this parent was again yelling uncontrollably. Piranha's coach, Todd Liebeck, recently filed Piranha's coach, Todd Liebeck, recently filed a complaint with the City of Palm Springs about Coach Si using repeated profanity on the pool deck. We were told this would be investigated. The complaint was, of course, denied by him. We believe this gives the appearance of impropriety. Under Seven Eleven, Limbassure stated before this board that Coach Si has nineteen swimmers whom most have swam for him for the past three years. In reality, only about four have been with him that long. For these reasons, we strongly oppose giving shared use of the Palm Springs Pool to Palm Springs Aquatics. As a parent, these types of behavior exhibited by Coach Si are not behaviors or attitudes we want our children to be exposed to. I request you ask yourself this question: Would I want my children or grandchildren to be exposed to these conditions and behaviors from a person in a position of trust and authority? Thank you for your consideration in this matter.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. Uh, my name's Casey Beardshire. I live at twenty-one ninety-nine Correa Road in Palm Springs. I'm actually reading a letter from, uh, Coach Gary Skinner. He was unable to be here tonight. He's the head coach of the girls' swim team at the Palm Springs High School. Dear Mr. Mayor and City Council, he says, "Unfortunately, I enable, unable to attend tonight due to family business. For your information, I am coaching my twentieth year as head coach for the Palm Springs High School. During many of these years, I have worked together for pool time with the Palm Springs Piranha Swim Team. The problem that has faced us over the years is that the city pool is the only, only one available now to three high school teams and the Piranhas. Fortunately, Desert Hot Springs High School found swim facility use at College of the Desert and is no longer using the city pool. Since this is the only available pool, the problem becomes that there are not enough lanes to support all the teams practicing around the same time. For your information, there are fifteen available lanes to use. However, Palm Springs High School can only use twelve lanes as the city keeps the other three lanes for use for any public lap swim. Palm Springs High School has over sixty swimmers this year, meaning roughly five to six per lane. This is with no other team present usually. At four P.M., Cathedral City High School starts practice till six-thirty P.M., with the Palm Springs Piranha sharing the same facility. Now, a new team wants the same practice time and what lanes are available. If these teams are now joined altogether at the same time, we have a severe safety issue: Too many swimmers per lane. Personally, I am thankful so many kids want to be involved in the swim program. However, we need to, excuse me, we need to face the issue of severe overcrowding and safety. The City Parks and Recreation Committee said simply, "Work it out. Easier said than done. The city has three lanes for its use. The new team wants three lanes. That leaves nine lanes for the two biggest teams, Cathedral City and the Piranhas. This is an impossible situation. Isn't there pool time after six-thirty P.M.? Does the city need three lanes all day long?" These are some po- excuse me, these are some politics going on that is hurting, I'm sorry, this is hard to read, that is hurting a safe resolution. Tonight, I am simply ask the mayor and City, City Council to investigate more before making a final decision that directly affects the safety to all that are involved. Thank you, Coach Gary Skinner. Thank you.
My name is Becky Andelson. I live at seven five five four five Mary Lane, Indian Wells. I am here to read a letter from Palm Springs resident John Sanji, who could not attend. Dear Mayor and City Council Members, my name is John Sanji, and I have lived in Palm Springs for twenty-seven years. I am a retired fifteen-year veteran police officer, ten years with Palm Springs Police Department. I'm writing this letter to express my deep concern about the proposed contract with the city and Palm Springs Aquatics. My daughter has been swimming with the Piranhas for eight years. My wife is a former Piranha Board President, and I have been a board member. As a board member, I felt it was my responsibility to make sure that our children should have a positive role model for a swim coach, to develop confidence, self-esteem, respect, honesty, and a fun, safe environment. Unfortunately, Coach Si provided none of this. As a veteran police officer, I pride myself on being able to communicate with children, teens and adults of all ages, and in being able to resolve issues in a calm, rational manner. Coach Si, on the other hand, has no people skills and solves issues by screaming at the top of his lungs and being verbally abusive and intimidating to children, and attempts to control situations with fear by picking up a chair and throwing it across the pool deck. I have personally witnessed this act and have seen Si yelling and carrying on so loud that a water polo tournament had to be stopped until his temper tantrum subsided. As a board member, I brought these actions to the attention of Bruce Bouchard, President of the Piranha Board. A meeting took place between Mr. Bouchard, Coach Si and myself. During that meeting, Coach Si was told his behavior was unacceptable and would be, and would not be tolerated. Coach Si stated that the behavior would stop. Within a few weeks, Coach Si was back to the same routine. The Piranha Board voted not to renew Coach Si's contract because children need a positive role model and not a coach who controls and intimidates by fear and teaches kids to be dishonest. Coach Si was paid several thousand dollars and signed an agreement with the Piranhas to stay off-deck at all times the Piranhas had practices. This agreement was also signed by Mr. Bouchard, who subsequently violated the trust of the Board and parents of the Piranhas by assisting Coach Si in obtaining his pool time while he was still President of the Board and while Coach Si was still employed by the Piranhas and a board member. I urge you public officials to please stop the dishonest behavior and, and the undermining of our children's positive experience with swimming. Do not permit Coach Si on-deck when the Piranha Swim Team is present. Thank you, John Sanji.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Maureen Lim, seven one five nine five Sahara Road, Rancho Mirage.
Maureen, could I ask you to pull the microphone down a little lower so we can hear you better? Thank you.
Um, I'm reading a letter from Coach Brad Fleener, who is the Cathedral City High, uh, from Cathedral City High School. My name is Brad Fleener, and I am the girls' water polo and boys' girl, and boys and girls' swim coach at Cathedral City High School. I am entering my twelfth season of coaching aquatics. All those years have been at Cathedral City. Over that time, I have been fortunate in that we have sent many students and athletes to college to continue their athletic and educational careers. The main point, the main reason they have been able to do that is because of their dedication to the sport. Another reason not lost to me is the fact that we have a beautiful facility at which to train. We, we do not have a pool on our campus and must be bused to the Palm Springs Swim Center daily. Although we cannot practice until four P.M. each day because we must wait for Palm Springs High to finish their workout, I am extremely grateful that we have the pool time we do. I have seen many changes at the pool over the past twelve years. Many teams and coaches have come and gone. I've had to make extra concessions each time a new request for pool time was granted, that is, college and outside club teams in the winter and spring, photo shoots, special groups and other high school teams. When Desert Hot Springs High School opened three years ago, they requested and were given pool time. That severely affected my pool time in an already impacted pool. Due to limited lanes available, they practiced in a shallow end where there are no lane lines. That part of the pool is not conducive to competitive swimming, yet that was the only space available. It has come to my attention that another club swim team has requested pool time. The pool is currently used by the city for open swimming, two high schools for both swim and girls' water polo, one club team, Piranhas, and various other groups, including club water polo and scuba diving classes. My swim team averages forty athletes. We usually have to swim five to eight kids per lane. There are days when I have to move my athletes two to three times during our workout to accommodate other programs. During the fall and winter, six lanes for swimming are not available due to the high school water polo seasons. During that spring, there are days when only five lanes are available for my team and the Piranhas. It is my opinion that there is not currently enough pool space to accommodate an additional program. I would be extremely disappointed if any, if another club swim team, with potential to grow to large numbers, was given pool time in a pool that is already stretched to the maximum. Thank you for consider, carefully considering my input. Brad Fleener, Head Boys and Girls Swim Coach, Head Girls Water Polo Coach, Cathedral City High School. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Marjorie Castagrand. Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I do not have written speech. I'm a little nervous. Um, I, my, my residence is twelve ninety-one San Jacinto Way in Palm Springs. I've been a resident of Palm Springs for fifteen years. I have two daughters that swim with the Piranhas, one for eight years, one for just a few months. She's great. Um, I've been on the Piranha Board for three years. I help her in the swim meets here locally. Um, I'm also involved on a larger level in swimming with Southern California Swimming. I work as an administrative referee. There are about eleven thousand swimmers within Southern California Swimming, three thousand of which are within our LSC or our section, eastern section. I deal with coaches from Las Vegas to Temecula to San Luis Obispo and Orange County. Everyone I talk to, um, it, it's been my experience in, as an admin, that there were another teams in Southern California Swimming that have to share the same facility, never mind share the same practice times. It's just not done. When other coaches and board members and, uh, other people in Vava Swimming ask me how my team is doing, and I explain the situation, they're appalled. They're absolutely appalled that, that this, that the city, which we've been a part of for thirty years, has not backed our program and continued to back our program and allowed us to do what we've done for the city, which has produced four Olympic swimmers from this, this area. Um, another thing that I found with Coach Si in my work as an admin is that he has a very flagrant violation of rules. Swimming, little kids, five years old, all the way up to Olympians have to follow the same rules. It's, it's a very stringent sport, very strict sport, um, and just things you have to do. At the last Palm Springs Invitational that I worked when Coach Si was with us, um, I made an administrative referee decision about some swimmers, and Coach Si took it upon himself to proceed to scrim me on deck, which is a, again, another flagrant violation of the code of ethics that he signs as a coach with, with USA Swimming. Um, I have personally witnessed John refuse to take times for swimmers because he was mad at them. I have seen him bench swimmers because he was mad at them. I have seen him, in other ways, just publicly humiliate them at meets in front of their his team, their other team members and other people within Southern California Swimming. Again, this is not a positive experience. This is not where we put our kids in swimming. We want them to succeed. They're on the edge of success, and we want to help them. Two nights ago, my daughter, who swims and, and works for Parks and Rec as a, um, lifeguard, came home and told me that, um, she had gone over to Coach Si when she was working and asked him to move over because the swimmer, the city needed another lane for lap swimming. John refused. They went over to Coach Si a little bit later and asked him to move because, uh, asked him to get out of the pool because there was lightning and there was a danger to the swimmers. And again, Coach Si refused. So, again, you have a situation where you have a coach who doesn't even follow the rules of locally. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name is Lisa Beardshire, and I live at twenty-one ninety-nine Correa Road in Palm Springs. I live and work in Palm Springs. I teach school at Saint Teresa's Catholic School. On August twenty-second, I wrote a letter to all City Council members. It was distributed in your Friday packet, which you received on August twenty-third. My letter gave a basic overview of the problems the Piranhas had with Coach Si. I asked each of you to contact me. I was contacted by Councilman Mills. After a lengthy discussion over the overcrowding issue and the hardship this was placing on Piranha swimmers, Mr. Mills instructed me and other interested Piranha, uh, members to attend the Park and Recreation Meeting coming up. I told him I was a bit wary of Park and Rec's Commission because of Mr. Bouchard, uh, was currently the Chairman of Park and Recs. I told him Bruce was the biggest proponent, proponent of the newly formed Palm Springs Aquatics, Aquatics Team, as his son was a member of the new team. Mr. Mills assured me that the process at Park and Recs would be fair, and that if there was even a perceived conflict of interest involving Mr. Bouchard, he should recuse himself from the matter completely. Prior to the September eighteenth Park and Recs Meeting, I spoke to a Commission Member, Shelley Saunders. It was very apparent during that conversation, Ms. Saunders already knew all of the details of the recent request from PSA, although it had not yet been on the agenda. At the first Park and Recs Meeting, each concerned Piranha shared in the three-minute comment section. Coach Skinner, Palm Springs High School, spoke about the hardship on all swimmers by placing another club team in the water. Coach Fleener sent a letter that echoed Coach Skinner and went into great detail about serious safety issues. The Park and Rec Commission acted as if, as if they had heard none of it. Each Piranha parent requested Mr. Bouchard not be a party to the discussion due to his obvious conflict. Mr. Bouchard continued not only to lead the meeting, but to be the biggest cheerleader for PSA. The second meeting I attended, the Piranhas went through all the, the proper procedural steps to get on the agenda. We were denied that right and given no explanation. Again, we all had our three minutes. Again, Mr. Bouchard led his very personal fight for PSA. The Piranhas were treated rudely, and the Commission only seemed concerned as to when our three minutes were up. It was not until the November meeting, when Mr. Bouchard was certain the Piranhas had legal counsel, did he abstain from the discussion on the matter before you now. Coach Si wants you to believe that he is a victim. The only thing John is a victim of is a due process of a democratic vote, a vote which is in direct, is a direct consequence of his own actions and his own behavior. There was never a time when the Piranhas rejected the current members of PSA. We welcome all swimmers in the desert to join our team. The PSA swimmers have not given the new coaches a chance. And as far as the swimmers having nowhere else in the valley to swim, that is simply not true. Palm Desert Aquatics is in Palm Desert. In the event that PSA is granted this contract, the Piranhas will be forced to use their limited resources to enforce the contracts I entered into with the Piranhas to stay off the pool deck when the Piranha swimmers are there. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Michael, last card, is it you?
You have it correct. Good evening. My name is Michael Andelson. My address is seventy-four seven sixty Highway one-eleven in Indian Wells. Members of the council, uh, the concern that the Piranhas have in large regard is the deceit that has been practiced upon them by the way this has sort of unfolded. We have a situation where Mr. Bouchard, as President of the Palm Springs Piranhas, signs a contract with Coach Si, in which Coach Si agrees he will stay off-deck with the Piranhas during practice, provided he has paid certain amount of money and that he has given certain privileges, which were extended to him. At the very time that the contract was signed, however, on July thirty-first of this year, as it turns out, the day before, Coach Si had obtained from the Secretary of State approval for his new business, Palm Springs Aquatics, with none other than Lynn Bouchard, Mr. Bouchard's wife, as the treasurer of that organization. Further, on July eleventh of that year, Coach Si, as a member of the Board of Directors for the Piranhas and as the head coach, had applied for pool use time. So, is it, there is this feeling of deceit where Mr. Bouchard, also the head of Parks and Rec Commission, uh, has been playing this from both sides and not being forthright, perhaps even reflected by last Wednesday's appearance before you and public comment by Mrs. Bouchard, speaking to you in favor of a contract, knowing that at that time, nobody from the Piranhas would be present. There's also this, uh, appearance of preferential treatment that has been demonstrated by Parks and Rec. We do have a situation where, uh, even, uh, as Mr. Bouchard had been told that he had a direct conflict, he continued to participate and in fact voted on the issue of the Palm Springs Aquatics contract. This at a time when Grace Jablo, who is a very respected member of the community, had asked him to abstain, and yet he nevertheless decided to vote on the issue. As well, Scott Mike Sell, the executive director, I guess, for Parks and Rec, uh, assured the Commission that pursuant to their directive, which was that a short-term contract be entered into, Mr. Mike Sell assured the Commission that's what he would negotiate, and yet today we are looking on the agenda for a recommendation for a one-year contract, contrary to what Mr. Mike Sell assured the Commission. All of this, and the way that the members of the Piranha team have been, uh, really refused the opportunity to engage the Parks and Rec Commission, leads the Piranhas to feel that there has been preferential treatment, and for this reason that we ask that the contract with Palm Springs Aquatics be, uh, denied. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does that complete the presentation? I assume so. I'll now turn the remainder of the request to speak cards, mark- Mark Wood, followed by Andy Wood.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Mark Wood and I live in Cathedral City. And we, uh, I have two sons that currently swim for the Palm Springs Aquatics Team. Uh, previous to that, they swam for four years for the Palm Springs Piranha Team. Uh, we elected to follow, uh, Coach Si to the new team because of the type of coaching and the type of discipline that the coach brings to the sport and to the, uh, to the swimmers. Um, I listened while the, the Piranhas came up here and talked about safety and talked about swimmers in the water, and I'm wondering if they grow to another twenty swimmers, won't they have the same problem? I also listened while they said that they had seventy-five swimmers and they equated those, all of those swimmers to dividing up and putting those swimmers in the lanes. But the, the truth is that not all those swimmers are in the water at the same time. There are different swim programs for different levels of swimmers and different ages. So, all seventy-five are not in the water at the same time. I also heard while they talked about the coach losing his job was a direct action of his, uh, um, anger. Uh, but yet, in a letter distributed to the general, uh, membership by one of the board members, said that his dismissal was a result of him not meeting a quota of swimmers. Nothing in that letter to the general membership said anything about his anger. Um, the swimming times are important. My kids go to school, they need to be home by seven o'clock to eat dinner and do their homework. Uh, my son, Andy, swims twice a day, five in the morning and then after school. He is in the top ten percentile of the state in swimming, and that is because of Coach John. Uh, this is not a splashing type of program. This is a competitive program, and Coach John is a competitive coach. I wonder how many of the other parents, uh, have the same type of discipline within their own homes? Thank you.
Thank you. Andy Wood, followed by Ashley Dunphy and Lynn Bashore.
Good evening, members of the council, members of the board. My name is Andy Wood. Um, I live in Cathedral City. Um, I've been swimming with Coach John for about three years now, and when I, when he first joined the team, you know, I, I was a fat chubby little child. And within two weeks, he'd slimmed me down by fifteen pounds, and within the first year, my, my times had dropped drastically. And I moved over once they decided to let him go because, for the most part, my times have dropped and they continue to drop as, as we speak. Um, earlier, the, one of the Piranhas, one of the Piranha speakers said something about my father coming up to John, or coming up to Coach Todd and, um, confronting him and yelling and screaming at him in front of the swimmers. My father went over there to talk to Todd about his negligence because bef, they were, um, getting ready for a meet three days before, cleaning, um, there, there's square things that go in the ground, and they're rusted and sharp. And one of them was up and I caught my foot on it and bled all over the, you know, all over the pool. And because Todd's negligence, they were not all down, and I had to go to the ER, had it stapled, was out of the water for a week, then went to Vegas in two weeks, and on my times were not what they should have been. Um, the, the, the statement about dishonesty is completely and utterly untrue. John is one who would take a bullet for any of his swimmers. Um, he loves us dearly and, uh, he, he teaches, he tries to teach us to do the right thing instead of the wrong. Um, there's ample room for all teams to swim at various times because that's what there is, and I hope you vote yes on this because I want to continue swimming with Coach Si and, um, eventually possibly make it to the Olympics with his help. Thank you.
Thank you. Ashley Dunphy.
Hi. My name is Ashley Dunphy. I swim from Palm, or for Palm Springs Aquatics and I live in Palm, I've lived in Palm Springs for the past sixteen years. I have been coached by John Sigunowitz for three and a half those years and want him to continue to be my coach. Coach Si knows what it takes to make us swim fast. Sometimes he might yell, but that's only to help us achieve our goals, and he's never swerved at us. He has helped me achieve my goals, which include swimming in two US Opens, one in Alabama and the other in New York, and two Nationals in Long Beach and Florida this past summer, where I placed sixth in the nation in my age group, and I am currently, um, ranked in the top three for my age group in Southern California. Not only do we swim from five to seven in the mornings, but we also swim from three to five in the evenings. This schedule works out well because we can go straight from swimming to the high school and back again, right after the bell rings in the afternoon. This is also beneficial because we get home before it's too late at night. After swimming, we eat, do our homework and go to bed pretty early so we can get up again at four-thirty in the morning. The pool has plenty of room for all Palm Springs residents to enjoy. Please vote to give Palm Springs Aquatics a one-year contract at the times we have been swimming. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Bashore, followed by Michael West and Melissa Rodriguez, please.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor. I am here, um, as the treasurer of the Palm Springs Aquatics, and my name is Lynn Bashore, and I live in Palm Springs, and I've lived here most of my life. Um, before you tonight is a contract for an agreement with Palm Springs Aquatics to, for the pool use. This agreement comes to you after three months, um, through your staff at Parks and Recs and through the Parks and Rec Commission. The staff has reviewed all of these allegations that are being made, and they've responded and had disposition to all of them. Um, the reason that it's before you now is because that is what your staff is recommending. Palm Springs Aquatics was formed for the kids. The kids want to swim with Coach Si, and many of them have been with him for the three years. They have developed strong relationships with him and work very hard for him to achieve a high level of swimming. We have been swimming since September third at the times that, um, Ashley just referred to, and everything has worked out fine. From five to seven in the morning, there is plenty of room. From three to five in the afternoon, and then the little ones come from five to six-thirty, and there has never been an overcrowding problem. The Parks and Rec Commission all walked out and, um, watched to see if there was enough room at the different times, and there has never been an overcrowding problem. Uh, when the high school swim, of the swimmers from the three to five in the afternoon, all of those swimmers will swim for the high school. So, there isn't any extra room that Palm Springs Aquatics needs when the high schools are swimming. The, uh, Palm Springs Unified School District has priority, and Coach Si, for the three years that he was with the Piranhas, always worked with the high school coaches to be sure they had adequate number of lanes, and there was never a problem. There hasn't been a problem with overcrowding. Everything has been working for the past almost four months that we have been swimming. So, we would, uh, request that you do, um, agree and approve this contract for the times that are shared use and the times as, um, recommended by your staff. This is about the kids. All of them are in Palm Springs Unified School District that swim for Palm Springs Aquatics. Eighty-four percent of them, sixteen of the nineteen kids, live in Palm Springs. This is the right thing for the kids and, um, it's a very great thing in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael West, followed by Melissa Rodriguez and Tracy Redman.
Hi. My name is Michael West, and I've been swimming for Palm Springs Aquatics since it was started. I was born in Palm Springs and have lived here my entire life. My mother has lived here for thirty-eight years, most of her life. I've spent my entire swimming career with Coach John. I want him to continue coaching me. This, he is an awesome coach and helps me achieve all my goals and more than just swimming, also in school and in basically just life. Um, the accusations made by the Piranhas are completely wrong about dishonesty. He teaches us to be more honest about everything we've do, about everything we do, and he keeps me out of trouble more than anything else. I strongly, um, disagree with the statements, um, they made about the crowding of the pool. When we swim from three to five, there's, on average, probably about ten Piranhas in the pool, and we take up three lanes, and there's plenty of room for everybody. When we leave at five, there's more Piranhas that come there, and I don't really know about that. Um, please approve the Palm Springs Aquatic, Aquatics Contract to use the swim center at the time we requested. There's plenty of room, and I witnessed this every day for the last two or three months since we've been swimming. I love Palm Springs and I wish to continue to swim in Palm Springs.
Thank you. Melissa Rodriguez, followed by Tracy Redman, and then Kathy Wilkerson. Good evening. You can go ahead. Why don't you read your name into the record? Go ahead.
Oh, my name's Melissa Rodriguez.
Hello, Melissa.
I am here to support my team, Palm Springs Aquatics. I've been swimming for Coach Si for about two and a half years, and he is the best. I am here to ask you to please accept our contract. I have goals and dreams. The only way to accomplish these dreams without conflict is to, to be swimming at Palm Springs Pool and the same times I've been swimming. My dreams and goals are very important to me. Please accept our contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Tracy Redman and Katie Wilkerson.
Hi. I was going to say one set of things, but after listening to all of the Piranhas, I've, I, my mind. Um, the main issue, they're, they're talking about two key issues, one being the crowding. Um, my kids were Piranhas before they were Palm Springs Aquatics, so it's the same kids, okay? If, if they were crowded before, they should have cut my kids from the team. They didn't. I don't see why that is now an issue, that my three are now too many. Um, the other is, is the behavior of the coach, and some of the board members decided to vote the coach to not renew his contract without consulting with the parents, and I had to go to my children and say, "You don't have your coach anymore." And my oldest daughter, who just turned thirteen, said, "If, if I'm not swimming with John, I'm not swimming. Just, I go with him." And this was before we knew, um, that he was going to start his own team, and my kids were already saying, "If he's not there, we're not swimming." So, it wasn't a matter of him taking people away. They wanted to swim with John. Um, so, on either of those issues, it's, it's not an issue. What it starts turning into is adults trying to get what they want, and all the kids want to do is swim, and, and we've done it once again as adults gotten in and screwed it up for them, and we need to let the kids swim. There's room, they're fine, they're loving what they're doing. Um, my daughter is doing better right now than she's ever done in her life. She's an A and B student, she swims three mornings a week, plus the five afternoons a week. My two younger ones are out there five days a week. They're freezing their butts off and they're loving it, and, and I don't see how that can be seen as a bad thing. So, I, I ask you to vote to keep our schedule as it is because as cold as they are from five to seven, if they have to swim later, my little eight and ten-year-old, gonna turn into lipopopsicles. They need to be home in bed, getting a good night's sleep so that they can do what they need to do all over again the next day. Thanks.
Thank you. Katie Wilkerson, followed by Michelle Dunphy and Leif Frederiksen, please.
Hi. Unlike all the other parents that you've spoken with from PSA tonight, I am brand-new to the team, but my children have had a relationship with Coach Si for the past three years, um, attending his swimming classes. And the first year, I was so impressed with the way he ran his swim school through the Piranhas that I decided to sign my kids up for the subsequent two years. And after every year, John would come to me and say, "Please sign your kids up for swimming, please sign your kids up for team." And at the time, the Piranhas seemed very large, and I wasn't sure if they would get the kind of attention that I wanted them to get, and it is a big financial commitment and a large time commitment. And so, I just kind of smiled and said, "Well, maybe not this year." Well, this last August, John called me and said, "I am no longer with the Piranhas, I am starting my own team, and please bring your kids to my team." And it seemed ideal. It was going to be a smaller team, he was going to be able to spend more time with them, and they would be at the beginning of a big deal, how many of us get to start at something and be the ground floor of it, and I thought that was just great. So, my boys decided that they would want to do that, and they have started in September. Their first meet, um, my youngest son, who is eight, placed third in, um, freestyle for his age division, which he was thrilled and wasn't a bad time for the first time. And my oldest son, who is ten, did really well. He was right in the middle of everybody, and I thought that was really cool. And his second meet, he actually beat his times. So, in a month, he had gotten better. Um, something that no one else has suggested is also, while the, most of the swimmers are from Palm Springs, is where they are from. Um, of the younger swimmers, five of them are from Vista Del Monte, where my kids go. One is from Catherine Finchi, and one is from Sierra Vista. And Vista Del Monte and Sierra Vista stereotypically aren't schools that you would think swimmers would come from. Um, you know, being a white man, rich sport that has been in the past, this, these areas weren't places, my kids didn't know anybody who were on swim teams until this. And I can pretty much guarantee that next year, with the way my kids talk up the team and their teammates talk up the team, it'll be an even better representation of Palm Springs a year from now. So, please approve the contract. My kids want to swim with Coach Si. I want them to swim with Coach Si. He's not the monster that the Piranhas have made him out to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Dunphy, Leif Frederiksen and Patricia Santiago. Good evening.
Hello. My name is Michelle Dunphy. I moved to Palm Springs in nineteen-seventy-one, and I have to tell you that I love living here. I am here to ask you to vote to give Palm Springs Aquatics a one-year contract at the times they are currently swimming. I have been acquainted with the pool since its beginning, as my husband, Jim Dunphy, was one of the builders. My daughter, Ashley Dunphy, has been swimming at this pool for almost eight years. In all my daughter's travels for her swimming, this is the most beautiful pool in Southern California, and it is also the largest in the valley. It would be a shame to deny these Palm Springs children the use of this wonderful pool that is in their own backyard. Coach John has coached at this pool for over three and a half years. He has always been able to work with the other high school coaches during their busy swim seasons to work out lane assignments and any other problems that arise. There is no reason that all the other coaches and him cannot work it out again this season so that all the swimmers can be accommodated. As you know, your staff has already researched all the issues that have been brought before you tonight and have found it workable and acceptable. And I also take personal issue with the fact that they are implying, the Piranhas are implying, that I would have my daughter swim with the monster. That is not so. Please vote to give the Palm Springs Aquatics a one-year contract at the times they are currently swimming. Thank you.
Thank you. Leif Frederiksen and Patricia Santiago, followed by Bob Carey, please.
Hello, my name is Leif Frederiksen. I've been swimming with John Sigewitz, or John Si for over a year now, and people, the Piranha parents are saying that his temper is over, is all bad and stuff. But when I, I swam for the new Piranha coaches for a month, and what I found there, that there's no, like, rules. You can mispractice whenever you want, and it's not, it's not even a workout. I have been swimming with John, and I've heard people say that John has cussed on deck. That is false. The only cussing that has gone on has once been out of my mouth, and he, and, and he told me about not cussing on deck, and I'd like you to find it, to say yes to PSA and our, and our stuff we're asking for.
Thank you. Patricia Santiago, followed by Bob Carey, please.
Good evening. Um,
Good evening. My daughter Melissa has been swimming for about two and a half years with Coach Si. She's swimming with the Piranhas. And we stopped going to swim practice because there was a lot of conflict with the parents getting involved, gossiping, not letting the children swim. And so when we found out that John was gonna have his own team, I asked them if my daughter was qualified to be on his team because he's just an awesome coach. And he said yes. And I just want to say that I think this can be worked out. I think all kids can be there. I'm there three times a week in the morning from five to seven. I don't leave. I'm there. I'm there five times a week. And I have never heard John cuss. I would never, ever let my daughter be in a situation like that. He's a wonderful man and he does a lot good for these kids. There's, I just don't understand why this can be worked out. I think they should let the kids swim. That's what they want to do. And the parents maybe should step back and let the coaches coach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Bob Carey and I feel like I'm a little out of order. I want to talk to you about the convention center.
Does it have a pool?
No. Don't want one right now either. I'm a member of the hospitality industry here in the valley. We own a destination management company and I'm here to encourage you to move forward quickly with the expansion of the convention center. The amount of additional quality business that it will bring to Palm Springs, and I think one of the council members mentioned earlier about keeping business in Palm Springs as opposed to letting it move down valley, the quality of the business, the opportunities for business and the revenue that will bring to Palm Springs are tremendous and enormous. Currently, the size of the convention center attracts only a very small percentage of the opportunities that really can come to Palm Springs. The expansion, which is currently planned, I believe increases the opportunity for business by some 60 to 70 percent of the market available that can actually do business at the convention center. Palm Springs has done it in the right order. You have improved the airport, the air is, the amount of air that's coming in right now, the Delta flights coming in from Atlanta is incredible. Now it's time to expand that convention center so that we can keep those flights coming here, keep that quality business coming to Palm Springs. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I have no other cards before me. Anyone else wishing to address council during public comments, please come forward at this time. If you would give your name to the city clerk, we'd appreciate it. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and the City Council. My name is Afta. I'm representing the Hilton as well as the Riviera Resort, the Wyndham Hotel, the Hyatt Regency, the spa, the Ramada, got the Caliente Tropics, our small hotel Holiday Inn and the Courtyard by Marriott, representing approximately in excess of 2,000 rooms, generating in excess of 60 percent of the total TOT for the city. Tonight, you have in front of you the approval process of the architect's contract. Thirteen months ago, we sponsored a measure to expand the convention center. The citizens of Palm Springs unanimously approved it. Since January, we've generated in excess and collected a million and a half dollars in excess TOT. And we feel it that it's extremely important that tonight you approve it as well as approval of some budgeted dollars for the pre-opening of the sales, advertising and marketing budgets so we can go ahead and continue to sell and market a convention center, which is the lifeblood of our city, not only to the city but also to the entire hospitality community. The restaurants, the rental cars and all other businesses that are related to the tourism industry will benefit for years and years. I believe this is the most important project the city will be embarking on since the opening of the convention center in 1987. And hope that all the business community can enjoy the benefits for all the future. Thank you.
My name is Joy Meredith. I own Crystal Fantasy in beautiful downtown Palm Springs. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Council and City Staff. I'm gonna be really brief here because I know you've had a lot of public comments this evening, but frankly, there were six things on the agenda tonight that were so darn exciting I couldn't contain myself and had to come up here and tell you about them. First of all, number six, to change Francis Stevens School and get that designated with the California Registrar of Historic Resources. That's really exciting. You know, it's a little extra thing we can get here. We get it kind of for free. Why not? I remember several years ago when I first heard Diane Matzner with that idea and it's just wonderful and just shows another example though, where an idea could be brought to the city, city staff will work on it and here it is. Now it's sitting here. And that's the way that good government should run. The next thing on the agenda that I find incredibly also exciting is number nine and that's the Canyon Hotel Resort Project. You know, we've been talking about things for a long time here and this is just such a great project and such a wonderful addition to the community and it's been such a long time coming. And I just think that it's really important that we support our neighbors, Thago Calientes and their developmental programs here and the different projects that they're gonna be working on. So I just think it's another really exciting thing. Also, on number 15, you're gonna be talking about the skateboard park. Okay, about three years down the line, but look, it's happening. So you know, you gotta take what you can get. It's all right. And you know, I think it's just a really wonderful thing. Scott Michael has worked so hard and John Raymond and everybody that's worked on this project, the community, just everybody. I mean, I just think it's so wonderful to finally watch it begin to set its course now. Here's one that might surprise some of you that have talked to me this week about parking. But I know that tonight you're gonna be talking about changing the parking limits a little bit in downtown and whether or not it's in my personal opinion. The point is, is that it shows that you understand that we still have a lot of tweaking to do on the parking plan to get it right. And so just the fact that there will be any discussion on it tonight and making these fine adjustments that we need to make, I really support that and really just appreciate the time that the city manager and assistant city manager has taken on this to get some suggestions back to you. And then of course, numbers 12 and 13, the convention center expansion. I mean, once again, just something else. We've just been waiting and waiting and finally now the plans are here. We're finally ready to move ahead and it's a very exciting time in Palm Springs when you have this many exciting things happening for the youth, for the whole community. And so I just really want to say thank you, really to city staff for just working on all these projects. It's been a handful and thank you very much.
Thank you, Joy.
Anyone else wishing to address council during public comments? No one? We'll close public comments. Okay? Okay. Counsel before you is the consent agenda, items one through seven. If you'd like to list any of them for separate vote, discussion or abstentions, please do so at this time.
Mr. Mayor?
It's Hodges.
I would like to pull number six for discussion.
Thank you. Any others?
Mr. Mayor?
The Mills.
I have a abstention on number seven, warrant, number 982868, business-related.
Thank you. Any others?
I have two abstentions, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I need to abstain on warrant, 982856, 982960, both husband-related.
Thank you. With the remainder of the consent calendar, we're gonna pull six, Dana, for separate discussion. Thank you. Items one through five and seven, what's the council's pleasure?
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion for approval, Mr. Oden and second by Ms. Reller Spurgeon. Any further comments, questions? I'll ask for roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Ross Spurgeon?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. Five-oh deemed unanimous. Let's now turn to item six. Dana, what's your pleasure? Full staff report?
Mr. Mayor, no, not necessarily. I wanted to see if maybe we could add something to the minute order. In the staff report, it made reference to the other city properties that could also be designated on the state registrar. And I thought maybe we could add into this minute order that the city should pursue state designation for all city-owned historic sites. Because we can always use the money to repair and the various different facilities that we have, I think would be a tremendous asset to the city to have as many designations within the city. And you get state recognition for it also. So I would like to see if we could add that to the minute order.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Oden?
Is that a motion?
That can be a motion.
Then I will second that.
Second that. Thank you. Can I get staff clarification as to what that would mean? Does that affect the application at all? Does that enhance it?
Mr. Mayor, what I would presume that to be is that's giving us, this is asking for authority to apply for the grant or apply for the designation. This would be giving me authority to apply for all city buildings. So it would be this plus other historic city buildings.
All city buildings with historic significance.
That are applicable.
All the historic, yes, owned by the city.
Right.
Yes.
Not so much the city yard per se, but you know, those are historic.
Please.
Okay. Part of history. All right, you got a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
We could do tours. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
Dana, I don't know if you're, are you referring then to the items that are, that were added, other than Francis Stevens, Zuplaza Theater, Village Green, Downtown Fire Station, that we pursue those or those and additional ones? Is that what you're?
I'm asking, yeah, that we pursue those and any others that the city owns. I'm not asking for the private ones, you know, the private historic sites that we have. But I think it would be very important for all city buildings to be put, if possible, on the national registry as far as the city buildings are concerned.
And I don't have, I don't really have a problem with that, but I do, or I would like, not necessarily, you know, there's some that to my way of thinking may hamper some, something that may want to be done in the future. And if it's a, if it's a national-registered historic place, I don't think we can play around with it. At least, I don't think we can. I don't, that's a designation that this council cannot remove if I understand the terms of that designation.
If we think it's a historic site, then we should be willing to preserve it. Otherwise, why is it a historic site and why do we have it that way?
And I certainly agree with that, but I would prefer to do it an item at a time and rather than say all of these. So, and so if you're looking to have them, to have the staff start working on these item by item, I'm certainly in favor of that.
Well, that's what I'm asking for, item by item, not all at one time, obviously.
Okay. That's really what I wanted to check.
Yeah, sure.
Mr. Oden?
Well, that's what I was gonna say, so it's all right. They've already arrived at that point.
So we're moving the minute order and we're suggesting the staff continue to pursue this on the other buildings to bring them forward individually.
We're not suggesting, we're asking staff to bring them forward.
Okay. Good. Approving the one-minute order and advising, instructing the staff to bring the others forward. Okay? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five-oh deemed unanimous. Completes the consent calendar. Counsel, we've got a number of people in the audience on number 11 that are still staying here. I would ask the indulgence of the body to move item 11 forward for action so that they can have their solution. So staff, if I may ask for item 11 for presentation, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is a, an agreement before you, Palm Springs Aquatics Agreement. Scott Michael will give the report. However, I would like to make a few summary remarks of how we got here this evening. Irrespective of all the ancillary impending issues that you heard in the speakers this evening, the issue that came before my desk was a request, a request for usage of the pool. In my mind, we had the obligation to make sure, A, that we could accommodate. We couldn't necessarily turn anyone away without a fair hearing and that's why it is here before you today. So we looked at the issues of what's in the current contract, what's in the proposed contract, and what we came up with was a solution before you of two options. And the options have to deal more with accommodation. Now philosophically, you may feel accommodation can go one of a couple of different ways and that's fine because that's your policy decision. I just want to let you know that what we try to do at the staff level and with the city attorney is make sure that whatever issues were out there, that were able to be resolved and brought before you, something that you can vote on philosophically, one way or the other. And with that, I would ask Scott to give the report and also then the city attorney may want to comment on some of the other conflict issues that were raised this evening. Thank you.
Scott, report, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The action before you is to consider one of two options for a contract with Palm Springs Aquatic for use of the Palm Springs Swim Center. Those two options are detailed out on page three of the staff report. And to give you a bit of background that you may or may not have heard or to clarify issues from a staff perspective from the comments this evening, at the beginning of July in this year, Coach John Saganowicz, previously of the Piranhas, now with Palm Springs Aquatics, approached the staff about the possibility of using or obtaining some pool time to teach students there. Apparently, he was concerned that he was, as being in the middle of contract negotiations or discussions, that it was not going to work out. Apparently, there were some problems as relayed between the two swim clubs and Coach Si had some students that he was concerned about their ability to stay with him and work with the pool. During about that same period of time, staff was approached by a member of the Palm Springs Piranhas Team Board that they identified that they were not going to renew Coach Si's On July 11th, Coach Si submitted an application to the city for use of the pool, just on strictly a rental basis. At that time, Coach Si asked about obtaining information and proceeding forward with doing a long-term contract. First off, he wanted to secure the use of the pool so his kids could continue to swim. And then he wanted to pursue a contract initially. His request was for a contract similar to what was going on with the Piranhas, a three-year contract, one with renewable times. Coach Si was advised of what the process was, how it has to go before the commission for item resolution or at least consideration and then ultimately on to council with a recommendation. At that time, Coach Si's proposal was presented to Parks and Recreation at the September 18th meeting. And at that meeting, there were members of both the new team, Palm Springs Aquatics, and also the Piranhas that showed up. And the main concern that staff heard at that meeting was that they were concerned about overcrowding in the pool and safety-related issues. After some discussion during the meeting, the commission directed staff to see if they could work out an agreement with the two clubs utilizing the pool. So with that in mind, staff ventured out and wanted to address the safety-related issue first because that was what had been raised with them. My staff member, Vicky Olten, who was entrusted with, speaking with both teams, contacted USA Swimming to see if there were some standards out there by which we should be taking a look at. At that time, Kim Holmes with USA Swimming stated that there was no formal standard attributable to swim teams, how many kids in a lane, et cetera, et cetera. That really, quite frankly, it was a subjective decision made by the coaches and the teams based upon the abilities of the students, whether or not they were small kids, slow swimming, fast kids or very expert swimmers. Obviously, the more experienced swimmers utilized or you could put fewer of them into a lane because of the overcrowding concept of that. Based upon that... Based upon that, uh, staff met with representatives of both of the two teams and tried to work out some reasonable schedule to accommodate them both. Now, for over thirty years, the Piranhas, uh, have been working with the city and, um, providing some youth swim, uh, opportunities for the kids in Palm Springs as well as other valid cities. There, that agreement provides times, um, that would be available to them. It's a non-exclusive agreement, but it stipulates times for an average schedule that they currently have with the city. Well, staff met with representatives of the both teams on October second and, uh, went over the current users, all of the users, high schools and everything of both teams. And at the beginning of the meeting, the, uh, Palm Springs or the Piranhas stated that they couldn't make any decisions about usages or anything without going back to the balance of their board and having some discussion. Um, subsequent to that, they were, both teams were provided a summary of the meetings and what had transpired, uh, on October eighth, or that they were supposed to respond back to October eighth to the staff, um, and, and try and resolve the issues. The Piranhas responded with a letter that was delivered to the staff on October seventh that implied that they would not agree with any, uh, joint use times with the Palm Springs Aquatics and, and them. On October ninth, uh, at the commission meeting, staff gave an overview of the meetings that had occurred before and, uh, stated that the one board would not or could not agree, uh, to do this. The commission directed staff to go back to the drawing board and see if they could reach an equitable agreement between both. Because quite frankly, the commission felt that there was some dissension between the two groups. It was parent-related, uh, and that really the issue at hand was to try and accommodate the kids. So they sent Vicky back to the drawing board to see if she could come up with some more, or at least try and resolve the issues. Um, the Parks and Recreation Commission, uh, was pretty clear about what their direction was. They just wanted staff to work out, uh, the issues that were at hand. Staff again met with the representatives and it was again stated to Vicky that they would not, at this time, agree with any joint use of, um, the pool with Coach Si being on deck. You've heard some other statements about his agreements with them. Quite frankly, those are not something the staff was concerned about because they were apparently internal agreements, internal issues between the coach and the team. And the city didn't really have any direct responsibility or issue with those things. Furthermore, at that, um, October thirtieth meeting, it was alleged that Coach Si had used some profanity on the deck. Uh, we immediately issued a written notice to him identifying that this was against the rules. If he was to, uh, if, if we could prove that he had used it, or he was accused to use it in the future, that he would be dealt with like any other individual in the pool using profanity or breaking any other rule. Uh, obviously, Coach Si refuted it. Vicky met with members of his team and to, to a member. They all stated that, sure, he screams and hollers as all coaches do, but he'd never use profanity in and around or at them at any time. Well, we attempted to resolve this, um, and, and currently, in the packet, you've got a couple of schedules. The Palm Springs Aquatics is currently operating under Schedule A. Schedule B is a modified schedule that stretches the times out to where there's an absolute minimum overlapping between the two, um, swim clubs. The reason we went to this approach, it was, it was quite obvious that the two swim teams could not, they themselves, agree to anything. Uh, we advised the commission, or at least I advised the commission, that it was in their best interest to move the, uh, matter forward, let staff try and come up with a recommendation and put it before the council to see if, uh, we could come up with an agreement, uh, that would accommodate the kids. The, there was an, an item that was mentioned earlier about the term of the agreement. What's before you is a contract, a standard contract agreement that we utilize for all of our services. It's a, a one-year agreement with renewable options. This had taken so long. Initially, the commission directed us to see if we could work out something through, uh, February and then come back to them with a longer-term agreement. Because knowing that it got busy in February, maybe we could get a long-term agreement put together by that time. Well, there was so much dissension in several meetings that by the time we knew we were gonna get to council at the first part of December, there wasn't much reason to go forward and waste the attorney's time, everybody else's time involved, and come to you with a forty-five-day agreement. We might as well go forward to, uh, either develop a longer-term agreement or not. I mean, we were faced with that at the staff level. That's why the term of the agreement is as it is. Currently, the way the pool operates is that no team or anybody is assigned specific lanes. The contract that we have with the Piranhas stipulates, uh, quite clearly that they must yield their lanes, if needed, to the school district. Everybody there must do that. And that would remain intact, too. In the past, it's always been that we've tried to let the coaches work or the people utilizing the pu- the pool mediate their own differences and their own usages. Everybody's been co- pretty cooperative, as, as long as I've ever been the director with the department, up until now. Obviously, there's some disagreements between the two teams. Um, and that is why, for the first time, the agreement that is before you stipulates a limited amount of lanes. It stipulates that that's all they are going to be, uh, made available. And, um, and because we couldn't felt, we felt we couldn't infringe on anybody else's usage anymore. Uh, and with that, that's, I, I guess probably, I, I'm certain that there are questions that you have about the issues that came before you this evening. I'd be happy to answer them, but, you know, we're at the, we're at the stage where, you know, staff was at our wits' end trying to, to moderate an agreement between these two groups where there, there was an awful lot of disagreement amongst their members. We have never had any disagreements with the Piranhas to date. Uh, and all of the issues that have come forward to me, uh, as the director, have quite frankly been fresh. Uh, everything that has been somewhat negatively displayed has come forward since July. I've never had a problem with any swim club, nor have I had any issues come forward about objectionable behavior at the pool in, in all my years as director until just recently. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions specifically that you may or may not have.
Very good. Thank you, Scott. Council, questions? I hear Mr. Alshire. Thank you. Legal report, please.
Yes, thank you. This is a very tragic situation, really, because, uh, clearly what you have here are some parents who have acted based upon what they think the best interest of, of their kids are, uh, based upon their concerns with the coach's conduct. And you have another, a set of swimmers who have gotten to their level of success based upon that coach, and those swimmers very much want to work with their coach. So you, you, you have a very difficult thing to work out. I feel it quite personally, because, uh, when I was in Palm Springs High School, I was on the swimming team, uh, from sixty-four to sixty-eight. And Jim Dumphy was the best, uh, swimmer in the Coachella Valley. Uh, I don't think he ever achieved third in his age category, but, uh, Jim was an incredible swimmer, somebody I really looked up to, uh, far better than me. Um, in terms of the issues that we have been looking at, uh, and a number of things that have been, uh, raised tonight, um, the issue of, uh, the issues that we felt were legal issues in all of this, uh, one involved the issue of, uh, the coach's behavior. And when we became aware of this issue, there was an incident that was, uh, brought up tonight, uh, that, uh, was brought to our attention. Uh, the staff investigated it. Um, we sent out a letter saying that, uh, the type of behavior that you heard about tonight, uh, if it were to occur in the future, in terms of throwing chairs or, uh, verbal abuse, uh, that type of conduct would not be tolerated. Uh, so we've sent out a letter that says that, uh, that that's our position. Uh, and obviously, we don't like being in the position of having to, uh, referee or investigate such, uh, things. But the city has taken a position, and if we have incidents like that, uh, the staff can look into them and the disciplining action would be to, uh, sanction the individual and, uh, keep them off of the deck area. So the subject brought to our attention. Uh, you certainly cannot act to enforce a rule without making, putting people on notice. Uh, that has been done, and, um, we're prepared to follow through on that if we have incidents that occur in the future. Another, uh, issue that was brought up that you heard, uh, tonight concerned, um, how the Park and Rec Commission conducted some of its proceedings and, um, whether one of the commissioners had, um, violated ten ninety of the, of, um, the government code and, uh, some issues related to that. Um, at the time that that issue was brought to my attention, uh, the Park and Rec Commission had already had several meetings dealing, uh, with this subject. Um, the, um, the, Scott, uh, came to me after he had, uh, made some rulings. Uh, we talked about the, the advice that he gave the commissioner in terms of what he could participate and, uh, what type of conduct, uh, he could do. Um, I think that, uh, Scott, uh, probably made a bit of a mistake in terms of reading, uh, some, an outdated set of, uh, city rules and, uh, provided the commissioner with advice that was probably the wrong advice. Uh, we talked about that. Um, the commissioner came into my office. Uh, we sat down, we had a, uh, discussion about the conflict of interest rules. Um, I do not believe that the commi- based upon the facts that commissioner told me, um, he does not have what would be considered to be a financial interest under ten ninety of the government code. So I don't think he violated that standard. However, um, there's another, uh, concept concerning a fair hearing. Uh, the city, which conducts administrative proceedings, has an obligation to provide fair hearings. Uh, there's some case law on that. And I think, given all the circumstances here, that the Piranha folks have a legitimate concern that they could not get a fair hearing at the Park and Rec Commission, uh, having a commissioner participate who had the prior involvement that this commissioner did. However, the commissioner was not aware of that. Again, based upon, um, the advice he received. So he had no way of really knowing that, uh, that was inappropriate. We discussed it. He was, uh, very, um, forthcoming and, uh, did not try and argue or debate, uh, the subject. He thanked me for the explanation and said in the future he would not participate in the matter. So from my standpoint, uh, that issue was brought forward. We discussed it, we dealt with it. Um, I think it's unfortunate that, uh, the, uh, prior Park and Rec Commission, uh, meetings occurred the way that they did. I do understand, uh, the frustration of the Piranha parents with that situation. I, I did meet with, uh, Attorney Endelson representing them, uh, discuss this. So we, and I think that he understood, uh, my viewpoint and was appreciative that we had, uh, taken appropriate action with the commissioner to explain the situation to him, and, um, I, I do not believe that that situation will be repeated. Um, so those, I think we did deal with those issues, and, um, it comes back to two other issues. One is this, uh, concept that, um, the Piranhas entered into an agreement with the coach that, uh, they feel he then went forward and has, um, violated the terms of that agreement. Um, they are concerned about it from a moral, ethical standpoint, and, uh, they may have a legal concern. Uh, my feeling was that that is a private agreement between those parties, and it's not an agreement that the city has entered into or the city, uh, really has, uh, a responsibility to enforce. Uh, if the coach engages in the behavior that violates our rules, then we can act pursuant to our rules. Uh, the issues they have concerning, uh, whether he entered into an agreement and then did not abide by that agreement, uh, that is something they can pursue in another form. So the last issue, which is really, I think, the most important issue, is the issue about the, uh, the fact that the Piranhas, although they have a wonderful history, uh, have spent thirty years, um, working on bringing young swimmers up and, uh, giving them Olympic dreams and so forth. Um, there is nothing in their contract that says the pool is theirs. Clearly, you've heard tonight that there are other groups and programs using the pool, and the city has always tried to get the maximum number of people in there. And I can tell you, you haven't lived until you've had to have eight people swimming in a lane and getting kicked in the face. Um, it's, it certainly can be a difficult situation. I think when, um, you know, I haven't gone over to the pool and haven't been there inspecting it, I certainly relied upon the information brought forward with staff. Uh, staff's feeling was that fundamentally, most of the, um, aqua- Palm Springs Aquatic swimmers had been swimming as members of the Piranhas. And the, uh, creating an, a new name was not actually creating more swimmers in the water. It was simply having some of the swimmers swimming under a different label. And because of that, staff basically felt that, um, you could continue to accommodate the joint use by both groups, um, under the current hours. And that is why the, the staff report, uh, and the contract that has been brought forward recommends that, uh, they be able to do that. And you heard from people tonight that, um, the, the smaller, the smaller Palm Springs Aquatic program does not want to start having to have their swimmers swim at the, the less desirable hours. Nevertheless, um, and although the Piranhas' contract is not exclusive, uh, you certainly have had evidence presented tonight that the, there can be conflicts in the use, and there are a lot of swimmers in the water. And I think it's within your prerogative to come out whichever way you want on that issue. You, and that's why staff has given you two sets of hours. So one set of hours is that you would let them swim at the, um, the potential is that there's the joint use out there, and we will, if there's inappropriate behavior, we will just police it. Um, but if you would prefer not to do that and not to approve the contract with the hours that are in it and, uh, provide different hours, I think there's enough evidence for you to do that.
Thank you, David. Counsel. Additional staff report, Mr. Oden? Is that it? Good. Counsel.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Oden.
This is really disappointing to me. Um, it isn't always what you say. We say it's the way you say it. It's always not so important what you do as the way you do it. Now, if you listen to the people who came up from the Piranhas, they said something very specific. And I listened to, um, Mr. Alshire's report. What they were saying to me is that they didn't feel like they were dealt with fairly. And if you listened, without saying any names specifically or identifying relationships, they're saying they felt that they were dealt with unfairly because of the relationship of people with council members. Now, that's the real issue. It's disappointing to me because I think a lot of this could have been avoided. I think a lot of this could have been avoided. I think it could have been avoided because quite a while ago, and I don't know how many months ago, members of the Piranhas came and presented me with some information. And it was before some of these meetings took place, and I gave it to staff. And I think they could have counseled our commissioners differently and could have avoided some of these mistakes. It's important to me that anyone who comes to the city to deal with any issue, that they feel like they're going to be dealt with in a fair manner. It's important to me that whether you are a commissioner or on a board, that you want to stay away from any kind of appearance of impropriety. Now, there are some things that these people were saying directly. The issues about Coach Si, look, whoever wants to send their child to him to be their coach, that's their prerogative. Obviously, he has some competence, just because he's been there a number of years. So that just boils down to a matter of choice. That's not the issue in many respects here. What the issues are is that people are saying, we didn't get a fair hearing. And now they're here before us to see whether or not we will give them a fair one. And I want to make sure that they are dealt with fairly, because I think that's what they deserve as members of this community. We can ask certain questions about staff and what they, what they asked and what they did, and I think that you have to ask yourself certain questions. If this was John Doe, would this situation have been handled this way? I don't know whether or not it would. And I'd like to say emphatically, I know beyond a shadow of a doubt that if this was anyone else, this situation would have been handled the same way, but I can't say that because it feels biased. Whether, and I'm not saying that it was, but it feels that way. And if that's the way people feel in reality, that is their reality. I am disappointed in staff because I think we could have avoided a lot of this. And I'm disappointed because it makes me think that if I give staff something and I'm expecting information back, that if they don't respond to it, or if I don't get information back, then it makes me wonder where else? What else? And I don't like being placed in that position, and that's how I feel as a result of giving staff information and asking them to respond to it. And other council members can...
Well, I'll tell you what, I thought, all I was listening to this, I thought that I didn't, I don't feel like a member of a city council here tonight. I felt, I feel more like a member of a jury. And I don't like being placed in that situation. And I feel badly for the kids. I feel badly that the kids had to be put in the middle of this because they learn by what they see and what they hear. And I feel very badly about that. I don't like being placed in this position to have to make a decision whether a kid swims or a kid doesn't swim in our pool. I mean, the pool is there to be used, and I think that all kids should be given the opportunity.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hodges.
Let me ask a few questions.
Please.
How long is the contract with Piranhas?
I believe we just renewed the Piranhas' contract within the past six months. Is that correct?
Do we know how long it goes for?
It's the same term, three-years agreement. It hasn't been that long since we renewed it, but I don't have that for you. I don't know exactly.
How much do they pay?
The Piranhas currently pay $1,000 a quarter as a result of their contract. And the difference between the two, Ms. Oltean felt that the amount of pool usage, based on $75 a month, would compensate us fairly and equitably in relation to what the Piranhas' agreement was, for the amount of lanes that they were utilizing and the amount of students.
Interesting.
It's...
I find it hard to believe that a quarter at $75 a month, which would be two and a quarter versus a thousand, is anywhere close to being equitable.
Three hundred versus a thousand. The Piranhas have the ability to have 75 students or swimmers, and the aquatics would be limited to 25 by the agreement.
And the high school?
The high school has what they have. And when the season rolls around in February, many of the swimmers for both the Piranhas and the aquatics, exactly how many I don't know, but they end up swimming for the swim teams at that point in time when it gets really quite crowded. And it's a lot of the younger kids that end up staying with the club teams versus going with the high school teams when we have the real heavy usage in February, starting in
If Jim Smith came in in July, had 20 students, and wanted to use the pool, would he have been allowed to do that in working on a contract?
Certainly, and that's why we did a facility use agreement with Coach Siaganowicz. They walked in, and since July, they have been paying their fees like anybody else would walk through the door. I can't tell you exactly what November's billing was, but Palm Springs Aquatics paid the city of Palm Springs, I believe, $3,200 for the month of October, and that was based on a strictly an hourly rental. Obviously, that's why they wanted to go to a long-term agreement. They had, you know, they were, while we were negotiating this, they were paying the full rental fees. So I'm assuming that the cost for them for November and probably December would be very similar to that $3,000 a month.
I guess that wasn't in the staff report, because I thought I read someplace where they had paid for the month of September, and that was it.
They've been billed and paid. They're up to date, as far as I know, from what my staff tells me.
I have a lot of concerns about this. I share Mr. Oden's thoughts very much. When you sit on a commission, when you sit on a city council, it's your responsibility to find out whether you have a conflict of interest. And you don't necessarily go to the staff person, you go to the person who has the authority to give you that information, and that's the city attorney. I think every commissioner should know that, I'm sure they do, but maybe aren't always using it, and I think that's extremely unfortunate, because I think it's put the city in a position that frankly stinks. It really does. This whole thing looks terrible. I've been reading about it in the minutes from the Parks and Rec, wondering why, what was going on, because you don't get a whole lot of information, but you certainly hear a lot of things in the community about what's going on. And I personally, when you have an organization that's been here 30 years, have done a wonderful job, do a good job, we have a situation where we don't have an expandable amount of room in the pool, why do we need another organization? Sounds like we barely have enough room for everybody that wants to use it now. I think frankly, the swimmers should be going to the school district and asking somebody to put in another pool, because that's what needs to be done. And then you'd have all the room in the world to use the pool. This is also a public pool for you and me and everybody else to go over and enjoy. It is not just for the high schools, the Piranhas, and the new organization. It's for everybody, it's a community pool. I'm very disappointed, just very disappointed in the whole process.
Thank you, Dana. Additional comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mills.
Scott, it's, it's, it's my understanding that the, that the two swim teams are currently sharing the use of the pool.
That's correct.
Is that based on the, on the schedule that's called Option A?
Correct.
Are there any, has your staff reported any, any, any problems during that, during that time that, that this overlap is, is a problem?
Other than what has been reported to my office, the profanity instance, no. And my office is approximately from here to the entryway to the council chamber from the pool. Every day since this issue came forward, I've been out there, I'm not out there at 5:30, mind you, in the morning. I certainly could be if you would like me to be, but every afternoon, I've intentionally watched the activities that happen in and around the pool when they're both there. And quite frankly, the loudest occurrences that happen in the pool come from the polo coaches. The water polo coaches from the high school, they are without question the loudest. We have Coach Siaganowicz on one side of the pool, Todd Liebeck and his, the Piranhas on the other side of the pool. And quite frankly, since this issue came before me, everybody's been pretty sedate. I mean, I have not, I'm there every day. I don't know if any of these parents are there every day, the coaches are there, but it's been pretty quiet. I mean, you can hear them hollering at the, at the swimmers, but, and they have to raise their voice like any coach does, teaching any student, any athlete, any athletic endeavor. But they're nowhere near as loud as the polo coaches. I can hear them inside, actually.
I think I can hear them from my office, too. The, the, the other question that, that I have is, the, if you really look at the differences between Option A and Option B as far as time, the amount of overlap that you're eliminating in B is pretty minimal. I mean, it still looks like the bulk of the time is, is shared. Is that, is that...
I think that's a fair statement, yeah.
And the biggest difference between A and B that I noticed was in the third column of B where the time for the, the afternoon time, or the late afternoon, well, actually, it's an early evening time, changes from 3:00 to 6:30 to 6:30 to 9:00 on school nights. And I don't know about everyone else, but I just, I think that's, that's rough for school-aged kids.
The overlap occurs in the morning, they're, they're pretty much both there at the same time. When you get into the afternoon hours on Schedule B, the new swim team would be required to come in earlier and have about a half an hour of overlap before the other team starts to practice. And then they would have to come back in the late evening and then swim till almost 9:00 PM to reduce the amount of overlap, although there is a slight bit in the afternoons at that time, too.
And Saturdays, it's the same times.
Correct, because the high school teams are not there.
Chris, it's hard to look at this, though, because you're not looking at what the Piranhas are doing. You're looking at two options for PSA. You don't know when the Piranhas are there.
I'm assuming they're the same as Option A.
No, not quite. The Piranhas come in about 3:30 in the afternoon and swim till 6:00. And then, where they're allowed to swim till 6:00.
A shaking of heads back there.
That's what their contract, that's what the typical schedule in their contract reads is that the 3:30 till later, and then they have the same use times in the morning. Now, we don't hold them to that. I mean, that's, what the, what their contract says is it's a typical schedule. It's misleading to say that we hold them to that schedule that's in the Piranhas' contract. That's never been the case. We've always been flexible to allow them use times that accommodate their students. And, and we've, that's why we have also, and it states in here that these are typical shared times. It doesn't say you must use the pool at these times. They've never been held to that, as well as it doesn't stipulate how many lanes they do or don't have. It's always been in the past that they've been flexible. We've allowed them and always accommodated if they wanted to come in at 4:00 and swim till 7:00. That has never been an issue up until we started having this conflict. But what's in the Piranhas' contract is not mandated, it's just a typical use time. And we're not going back and asking to change that either. What we're doing is trying to stipulate what typical times are that are accommodating to the students, the kids, and what they feel they could get by with.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Oden.
So then, what we're looking at are schedules that really are not schedules, so that if there's an overlap, we won't know where to say or what to say to what person based upon what you've just shared.
Well, in an effort to try and not make this staff report too confusing, what we did was we gave you a schedule that is, it's the maximum amount of overlap, which is Number A. If you look at 5:00 to 7:30 AM is what the Piranhas are using the pool, 5:00 to 7:00 AM is what the option is on both A and B. The Piranhas come in roughly at 3:45 to 7:30 PM. We're saying here, 3:00 to 5:00 PM, and then 5:00 to 6:30 PM on certain days, or 2:00 to 4:00, and then 6:30 to 9:00 PM, a later shift to try and separate them out as, as the maximum amount. The way the staff worked on this is they, they said, these are the desired times, which is in Schedule A. There are a fair amount of overlap there, but there, it's still staff's opinion that there's enough room in the pool. But if the council chooses to withhold, that, you know, you just have to have the maximum amount of separation and not have the two teams on the deck, then we could go to Schedule B to try and get there with that. But you can't really stretch it any more than that because the pool isn't open for the kids to do it.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mills.
Scott, as far as fees go, I understood what, what your explanation was. I would think that whatever we do here, that the, that the fee schedule be equitable based on the number of kids, I think is probably the most equitable, equitable way to do it, if the times are, the allowable times are similar. And I think there needs to be a little adjustment there to make sure it's fair with the contract that's already in, in existence. And I don't think we're talking about a lot of money here, but I think there is, it needs, it needs to be equitable, no matter how this ends up. I think it, I think it should be equitable. That's my questions.
Well, I would, I would take the position of trying to develop some sort of policies that afford accommodation. I am hard-pressed to sit here with an audience full of parents and children and coaches and swimming enthusiasts and turn to any of you and say, you can swim, but you can't. You can go there at that time, but you can't, and just terminate indiscriminately. I think there's some givens that we should try to establish. Number one, there are certain times of the day where these kids just cannot swim. You can't have kids getting there at 3:00 in the morning to swim. I'm amazed these guys are in the pool at 5:00, which tells me they're probably up at 4:30, and Mom and Dad might be up at 4:00 trying to get ready. So I'm not suggesting they start any earlier. I'm amazed these kids get in the pool at 5:00 o'clock and swim for two hours, and then get dressed to go to school. get dressed to go to school, only to finish school and get back in the pool again, whether for the 3:00 to 5:00 shift or the 5:00 to 6:30 shift or any other variation you wish to show me. But on 11A3, which talks about Option Two, I can't understand how I can indicate on a weeknight, a school night, that kids will be swimming at certain ages especially till 9:00 o'clock at night, especially when I want them back in the pool at 5:00 in the morning. So there's got to be some realistic times that we are trying to facilitate for all swimmers, whoever they may be, okay? I don't know what a 2:00 starting time for any student does because certain kids are still in school at 2:00. Depends on what level of schooling they're at, mind you, but 2:00, it's difficult to get there, and I don't want parents racing across town trying to make that 2:00 slot. So I got to get some input back from staff perhaps as to what a realistic timeframe is that puts less hardship on parent and swimmer. Because right now, 5:00 to 7:00, to me, is amazing, let alone finishing school with two more hours of swimming. We have 15 lanes, is that right, Scott?
That's correct.
And I've heard numbers as low as five per lane, and some comments came in on some of the high schools, up to eight or 10 swimmers per lane. We talked about fee and being equitable on the fees and how do we establish it? I would suggest that I would like to understand how you charge per lane and at what point you say you have maximized that lane with swimmers. Now, whether you can put 15 little ones but only eight big ones, you know, I'm not an expert in this area, but I imagine size, speed, and so on has some factor. So I need to understand, how do you rent a lane of this? Who owns this pool? The city of Palm Springs, ergo, the citizens of Palm Springs own this pool. Any city will state their first responsibility is to the citizens of Palm Springs. We have, as everyone has already stated in their own way, we have one of the largest, if not one of the finest pools, facilities available in the Coachella Valley. It's no secret that we have memberships in both clubs that come from other cities. And I'm not suggesting that we exclude them, but I think the priority is that we have to serve our citizens. If, in fact, the scenario fell apart at AYSO, and somehow there's a splinter group and they wanted to use the same facilities, what do you tell them? You half, you third, you eighth can't play soccer? You have to stay with the AYSO? I don't know if we'd state that. I think we'd try to find a way to accommodate both groups because they are both trying to accommodate the kids. We don't have a swim program structured in this fashion, so we're fortunate to have organizations, plural, that are willing to put this together, whether it's Little League, AYSO, Piranhas, the aquatics, whoever it is. Their volunteer efforts give us a quality of life that we don't have through city efforts. So I'd look for some sort of accommodation. You have to share the benefits and you'll have to share the hardships. It's just the facts. Now, you can start saying, "The pool has reached its maximum. You can't put any more kids in there." Well, then I'd have to say, "What kids are in there that are not the primary concern of the city council of the city of Palm Springs?" Primary. All kids are a concern. Primary. When I hear that high schools have preferential treatment and we must yield to them, I wasn't aware of that, but I'm just wondering, why is it we yield to a high school from another community versus to our own citizens?
It's a joint powers agreement with the school district.
We've had that agreement for years.
I understand that, but it just seems as though we yield that which is the citizens to a neighboring community, two high schools, in fact. First DHS, which had us another arrangement now by some statements to COD. So I'm just trying to figure out, how do we get the most use for our citizens? And I don't know if, in fact, the number of swimmers through all the organizations and clubs and otherwise has somehow reached a saturation point that you have to say, "Okay, this group has to go," or you have to reduce the number of swimmers in your club. I can't see extending the hours. I mean, I may be wrong. I'll turn to the parents. You want to get there at 3:00 o'clock? I don't think so. I think 5:00 is about the biggest hardship you can endure, and you shouldn't put your kids through anything worse than that. So you got to establish where the hours... seems like 5:00 to 7:00 and 3:00 to 5:00 are optimal. The 5:00 to 6:30, someone had mentioned, that's the little ones, and I don't know what that means. I understand the concept, but I don't know what it specifically means. So how do we get the maximum use? Now, the process that got us here may, in fact, be flawed, but I don't want to continue to flaw the process. I'd like to find a way to get as many kids in that pool as possible. Find accommodations for everyone. Again, share the benefit, but share the hardship. I can't make everybody happy, but I'm not going to make everybody else, one side or the other, carry all the pain. The reality is, we've got two organizations that want our kids to swim. I'm trying to figure out, how do we get to a situation that allows that to happen?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Oden.
I don't really see the Piranhas as individuals. I see them as a collective group that has been a part of our city for over 30 years. So if we're looking at two groups starting today, it's that type of priority. I'd agree with you wholeheartedly. But when we have a group starting today and a group that's been here for 30 years that has represented... what we have done and accomplished with swimming in this area has been because of them, and even the production of this new group is because of them. So, I mean, I don't think we can very well look at them as outsiders. I am... I don't see how... I think that we're setting ourselves up and these people, if we think we can have them all there at the same time. I don't think that's going to work. It's just too much history. Minimally, yes. But I think based upon these schedules, I don't know how we get there because I can't see it here. But however you want to modify it, I think the minimal interaction is going to be the best. And that's Option B.
Additional comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
The important thing to me here is that any kid that wants to swim in that pool is going to be able to swim in that pool, no matter what organization it is or how the two organizations overlap. I look at, they've been swimming together now for three months with basically not an incident, as I am understanding from staff, okay? And it seems to be working fine to me. I think if you're looking at minimizing conflict by just reducing the amount of overlap, I mean, yeah, maybe you did some, but the overlap is still there, and I still think three-quarters of the time is going to be there. And I think, you know, I think they need to get along. And if that can't happen, then, well, I mean, I don't know. I mean, in my opinion, they're both entitled to contracts as long as the pool will accommodate it. And staff is telling us the pool does accommodate it, will accommodate it and is currently accommodating it. So I would like to move for approval of Option A on this contract with a staff review of the fee schedule based on the current contract with the Piranha swim team to be reviewed and equitably, and the fee for the new contract with the aquatics to be equitable, adjusted to be equitable. That is... minute or close.
With the minute order. Motion of approval by Mr. Mills for Option A. Is there a second?
Is that with the understanding that if there are any behavioral problems, that Mr. Alshier will write that into the contract, that the city would immediately deal with that and the option is over? That was an absolutely?
That was an absolutely with the mic off.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Mills is seconded by Ms. Rollis-Bergen.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Alshier.
As I understand, if I could ask a question about the motion, the comment in particular about the equitable adjustment of the fee, are you basing that on number of swimmers, number of lanes? And if it's number of swimmers, do we change the fee based upon the changing membership of the organization?
Well, as I understand it, the current contract is, as Scott mentioned, was for 25 kids, and the Piranhas is for 75. So it's based on maximum number? Is that...
The way the contracts read is that the Piranhas contract states that they have an average of 50 swimmers. That's an annual average. Right now, I believe they have somewhere around 75. That's what I've been told. In the summer, that obviously drops down a little bit less, and it's more close to the 50 average. It was 52, I believe, in July. Now, the Palm Springs Aquatics has 19 swimmers today, and that's where the rates were based upon, that Ms. Olteen came up with her recommendation. So if you were to ask me today, they have about a third as many swimmers as the Piranhas do. The Piranhas pay three times as much. We're pretty close to it in rent.
And I would say that, I mean, however it's going to be done, whether it's based on lanes or number of swimmers or overall of each, and if you're going to do it swimmers, which seems to me to be a pretty logical way to do it, and you could evaluate it yearly with that it be, if it's a third, then it is a third. And the numbers aren't, you know, they are close, but I think it should be closer to what a third is. But I would certainly leave that up to staff to do an evaluation. And if, I mean, I'm not really interested in having that evaluation come back to us, but I'd like to at least have something to show us, if need be, how that determination was made so in future use, we can use that tool.
Then are you saying that, just again, because I would have to write this, the idea would be that there's an annual evaluation and we get a membership report from the two entities, and it should be roughly proportional to the membership as reported? Is that what you're saying?
Unless someone can think of another way of doing it. I mean, that certainly makes sense to me. I mean, you're not going to be out there counting heads every day. I think you're going to have to rely on the organization from a reporting standpoint.
We already have a contract with the Piranhas, and I don't think that's fair to go back and ask them to pay any more than what they already have.
No, I'm saying that's the standard.
Okay.
I would like to see some sort of a relationship to the amount of money you pay, the amount of lanes you are allowed to use, and some references to the number of swimmers. Now, I'm not saying you can control how many people are in the pool. That's up to them to determine based on whatever they're doing. But I just don't want to see 100 membership having only one lane, and I don't want to have 25 members having 10 lanes. There's got to be some realistic ratio to the membership, to the lanes and the fee paid. So if you've got 75 versus 25, and PSA wants three lanes, does that represent that Piranha has roughly nine lanes, three times as many? So again, there should be some parity based on size of fee, size of membership, number of lanes. And I'm not going to try to tell you what that is. I just tell you that that's the policy I want you to work on. You can't charge somebody three times as much and give them the same amount of lane space and time. They're going to spend three times as much just because they're getting three times as much. I want equality on both sides when it comes to fees and access. And again, it's based on number of lanes available, and I don't know what that is.
So you'd like to see some language that talks about the number of swimmers and the number of lanes. The Piranha stays what it is, but the other group is in relationship to that on some basis, and the director would annually make that determination and fix the fee?
Well, we'd see a fee schedule, I assume.
Well, wouldn't... I assume it's, there's an adjustment clause in the contract, and if you want to see it back, it would come back here every year. If you're willing to have the director do it, I'd have to have, I'd leave it with the director.
I'm okay with the director doing it, as long as he understands the concept.
Yeah. I feel the same way. I think it can certainly be handled at staff level. Is that okay with you?
Yeah.
Okay. Any further comments or questions?
Well, you have put enough conditions into this now that the Parks and Recreation Commission hasn't been able to work out for five months, but now you're asking staff to work it out. I don't see where we're going here. I think we're going around in circles, and I don't think that it's fair to any of the people involved. I think if anything, we should vote on nothing or send this back to Parks and Rec, give them a fair hearing, and let it come back to us. But this is not a solution. Chris, you may have sat there and didn't hear of any conflicts, but I certainly heard of conflicts that were going on in the last four months in the pool area. I don't know how this is going to work. You're asking a group that's been there 30 years to now have another group in the pool at the same time, essentially, using additional space, which is limited, but yet you're asking Parks and Rec to work it all out. They haven't been able to work it out in five months. How are you going to work it out now?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Oden.
It's interesting, you know, some of the recommendations. Now, we had information read into the record from the various coaches who do this. This is what they do. They know it. And even though they're with the high school and other places, I mean, you know, they've said, "It's not enough room." And then we come up with a solution that says, "It's not, there's plenty of room." So I don't know how suddenly we become the experts over these people who are doing this every day. I would tend to agree. I would, I don't know how we can do this at this point because I think all of these young people, all these children, need to have access to the pool. They do. There's no question about that. But this whole process is so flawed, I'm not sure how we straighten it all out at this point. And I think a schedule, and, I mean, certainly I want all these people to work together, and that's, I wish that for the world. World peace, you know? But the reality is that there are some conflicts, and this very process that we're going through tonight, it's going to increase the division between these people. So to think that they're going to go there tomorrow and suddenly everything's going to be peaches and cream, it is not reality. So we have a motion on the floor.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Ready.
In the wisdom of King Solomon, if I may, what I would suggest is, if you would want to, and now you have a motion on the floor, and... So maybe I should...
Call for the question.
I'll wait till the motion's voted upon. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, last for a roll call.
Ms. Hodges?
No.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
No.
Ms. Rollis-Bergen?
No.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. Fails two, three. All right. Redirect.
Redirect.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, what I would suggest is that I will ask the members of each, the leadership of each of these teams, I will invite them to City Hall, and I will sit with them, with the proper staff and my staff, and we will work this through, and we will come back to you with somewhat of a different solution agreed to by all parties. I'll bring in lunch if I have to. No one will get dinner, but we'll resolve it then.
How about breakfast?
Okay. What's the pleasure of the body? You got to give some direction, yeah?
Okay. Then I would move that we would direct the city manager to attempt to resolve this issue with all invested parties.
I'll second that.
All right. Motion is seconded to send it back to the CM for his guidance and counsel to resolve. Any further comments or questions? Any direction you want to give city manager? I would like to know if, in fact, if you're going to find a way to get these two parties to work.
to work, that you get all parties to work. And again, I want to understand how it is the high school gets eight lanes when we have requests for citizens to have others. And I know there's a joint usage, but it doesn't mean they get the entire pool or whatever they want. It's a working relationship between the two government entities. And the question is, what can we afford to give them based on the growth in our community for swimmers at the young age that are not high school participants? So I suggest you get some kind of input as to how you can affect solution here without, per se, excluding the high schools that are involved in the pool. All structured programs should be part of your discussion. That's my direction, or request. Whether you can get it or not, I don't know.
All right. You got a motion on the floor? Any further comments?
The only final question to this, and again, I'm just throwing this out, if you have a desire, would council want a subcommittee to be a part of this process?
I think it would be better if we stayed out of it.
Right. I concur.
Thank you.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Ross Burgen?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Five-oh. Mr. Ready, it's in your trusted and capable hands. We'll now take a slight recess, and we'll be back in about ten. Thank you. It's ten-oh-two. Let's call the meeting back to order. We'll go to item eight, the first of our public hearings, case number 5.0889, PD number 269, tentative tract map 30058, Burnett Companies. And I'll turn to Mr. Ready for a staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the plan development district on the tentative tract map, asking your approval. Mr. Evans has a staff report, and I would ask him to give you the details. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ready. Mike? Mike here?
Mike's coming.
Where's Mike?
Mike's about here. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This is an item that you've already taken the first step on under redevelopment agency, under your joint public hearing for the Burnett properties. It's a proposed subdivision, forty-six acres subdivided into seventy-six lots up on the north end of Sunrise Way. The project is located off of Sunrise Way. You have San Rafael, which will be down approximately in this location. The existing mobile home park of the city is here. Coyote Run is located right in here. And the proposal takes access off of Sunrise Way, has a street system with a cul-de-sac here and a loop system, has a series of lots that range in size from about five to eight-thousand square feet. There's two different areas of the project as far as lot size. The area in the olive green is a little bit smaller lot size, shown in this subdivision map. The area in the light green is a little bit larger lot. So you've got two components. Planning Commission action, they took a look at these lots on this end and looked at the lots on the adjoining Vintage Palms project, and asked that these lots be of similar size and configuration so you would not have two houses in your backyard. The planning commission made that recommendation. Planning Commission also made a recommendation on Sunrise Way at the main gate that if the project goes towards an active adult project, that they could have gates. If it's a traditional residential project, they would prefer that it not have gates. The planning commission recommended approval. The project's consistent with the general plan. It's consistent with the neighborhood with those changes. I'd certainly try to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Counsel, questions on staff report?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Hodges.
The planning commission recommendation on the home sites, how many would be eliminated to accommodate for?
The way the recommendation actually worked, it's, you know, the home sites through here that they would have to make some adjustments to, and the commission basically said if they wanted to add the home sites and take a look at some other areas where they might put in some of the smaller lots as a trade-out, that that could be done in the final map stages. So it's really up to the developer. We've talked to the developer about this condition. They seem to be comfortable with it.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address item eight, the Burnett Companies, please come forward at this time. I have no cards requesting.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Jason Lee with Burnett Companies, and I'm here to represent the project. The comment messages about, from planning commission, they did ask us to reduce those, actually change those lots to larger lots, and we were going to redistribute them throughout the project and maintain the same amount of lots that we have on the project. So I think that was the only question that you had for me. Otherwise, I'm here to answer any other questions that you may have.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council during this public hearing? Very good. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Turn to council for additional questions, comments, or action. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have any further questions. I'll move the resolution.
I'll second.
Motion for approval by Ms. Hodges and a second by Mr. Oden. Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's five-oh. It is deemed unanimous. Next item on our agenda is a public hearing, number nine, case number 5.0932. It is PD 280. It is the Agua Caliente Development Authority. Mr. Ready, I'll turn to your staff for their report, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, please, I requested plain amendments before you for the Palm Canyon Golf Course, South Palm Canyon, and Mr. Evans will give you the staff report. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before we begin, I need to make it public that I need to abstain on this issue because of the proximity of my residence.
Thank you. Jeanie?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this item has three separate action items and resolutions before you. One is a general plan amendment. The second one is a specific plan amendment. The third one is the preliminary plan development district and final approval of the grading plan as far as the final development plans. This is the Canyon South Golf Course proposal. It's a one-hundred-and-fifty-two acre site located on Murray Canyon Drive, South Palm Canyon Drive, and off of Bogart Trail. The proposal is a fairly simple one. If you just take a look at the project, it's a fairly simple project. The existing golf course is tired. It's outlived its time. It needs to be reconstructed, and the Development Authority, in accordance with their lease on the land, wishes to upgrade the property. In addition, to make it a substantial golf course and get the yardage and configuration that they need, they'd like to expand the project by approximately seven acres into the Palm Canyon Wash. I think it's primarily the seven-acre expansion that's caused some controversy within the environmental community. Again, the applicant is the Agua Caliente Development Authority. The project's got a full design team that's worked very diligently to try to bring this project forward. We've submitted a lot of new materials to the city council. You received a packet of material late yesterday, which was the material from the planning commission meeting, basically doubled the size of the report before you. That material primarily was submitted by the Sierra Club during the public hearing. The planning commission in its action revised one condition of approval. We handed that out to you. It's in legislative form. It has to do with the further review of the lighting plan. And then in the packet of materials in the last couple of days, you've received a revised mitigation monitoring program that deals with some recommendations from Riverside County Flood Control relative to how the permitting and review of the flood control elements of this project would proceed. Those minor changes... changes were really clarifications that that agency asked for, didn't really adjust the substance of those conditions of approval. Again, this is a 152-acre site, predominantly Indian leased land. A small portion of the property on the east side is outside of the reservation and fee land. The project is being implemented under the Canyon Park Resort and Spa Specific Plan. It was originally approved in 1991, at which time the city certified a fully IR. Subsequent to that, in 1994, the city amended the specific plan, moved the land uses around. And at the same time that they approved that specific plan amendment, the city approved a mitigated negative declaration of environmental impact. That moved the land uses around, and we'll show you some of those changes. The action before you involves a general plan amendment. And the first exhibit that we put up on the overhead display is the existing general plan. And Jing Yu, who's been up late tonight, she's been working late a number of nights, is going to point out a couple of locations on the map that the changes are proposed. Long Murray Canyon, we're proposing that we get rid of the L2, which is low-two residential designation, and replace that with golf course. On the east side of the property, the area that's shown as L2, we're recommending that that northerly projection be eliminated, and basically the southern portion, the golf course designation be eliminated. And basically, along an east-west line, to the south, it be all L2, and to the north, it all be public recreation. Jing, if we could have the next slide? The proposed general plan amendment is basically to reflect the current ownership patterns and where the golf course needs to be. As I indicated, we've eliminated the residential low-two along Murray Canyon, replaced it with public recreation on the east side of the property. Basically, the leasehold interest is all public recreation intended to be golf course. And then the southerly, southeastern portion is low-two. And then south of Bogert Trail, there's a small portion of public recreation, which is the existing golf hole that's south of Bogert Trail. Next slide. The existing specific plan designation that actually is the controlling document for land use is the specific plan planning area map. This is the document that's in the specific plan today. It's figure 19. And the area where the golf course is proposed and the general plan amendment is proposed was designated as planning area number one. You can see the outer boundary in purple. That area was designated for residential land uses and golf. The proposal before you today is to not change it, to leave it residential and golf. But in fact, it will, the number of residential units will drop from 239 to 89 if the projects that we're looking at continue. The environmental impacts associated with dwelling units will be reduced. The amount of traffic on Bogert Trail would be reduced based upon this type of proposal. Again, the area that we're affecting, south of the dashed line is all to be residential. The area north of the dashed line is all to be golf. Very consistent with the intent of the Canyon Park specific resort, or specific plan. Next slide, please. The document that we're recommending that be adjusted, it's relatively minor adjustment, is this specific plan land use conceptual development plan. This was the conceptual development plan as theorized by the developer at the time, Canyon Development. It was not adopted as the only way this area could develop. It was intended to be the conceptual layout. Again, the area adjacent to Murray Canyon would no longer be residential. The area on the east side, again, north of the dashed line would all be resident, or golf, and south of the dashed line would all be residential. And if we could see the next slide, that was the existing situation. The proposed designations are shown here, basically golf course on the leasehold interest land and residential on the fee land to the east. Again, the overall development plan and master plan for this area called for golf and residential within the area that we outlined in purple. It's a very minor adjustment, something that we felt was relatively minor, and the Planning Commission recommended approval of this change to the specific plan. Now that I've given you an overview of the issues that really affect the specific plan, I'd like to move into some of the issues that affect the overall project. As we took a look at this project, the expansion of the golf course is basically to the east. It's seven acres. There's also an area that would be restored. That area is approximately three acres. So if you take a look at the restoration that would occur versus the new construction, the net change in the Palm Canyon Wash after restoration is four acres of encroachment. The Planning Commission reviewed that. They felt that that was a reasonable request, and they felt that it was consistent with the intent of the specific plan. In 1991, when the EIR was certified, there was a lawsuit filed by the Sierra Club and the Andreas Palms Homeowners Association. At the end of that discussion, there was a stipulated judgment entered into that basically imposed restrictions on the city and then Canyon Development and then successors in interest. We took a look at that agreement, and we've made it very clear to every developer we've talked to in this area, whether it be the Aguacaliente Development Authority, Palm Canyon LLC, or other parties. It is the city's intent to take all actions necessary to implement that agreement fairly reasonably the way it was written. Whether there are successors in interest or not, all of the environmental mitigation measures that were outlined in that, over and above the EIR, we've ensured through the review of the Aguacaliente Development Authority golf course, they've been complied with. To that extent, we provided a 17-page breakdown of each component of that judgment, an evaluation of the project, and a compliance statement. We believe that we're in compliance. I think the Development Authority believes they're in compliance. And to make sure they're in compliance, we imposed conditions, and we're going to ask that they survey and stake the areas in the Palm Canyon Wash so that there should not be any encroachments or violations of those particular criteria. I'm not going to go through that lengthy document. You have it in your packet. But those were the issues that, in the judgment, dealt with environmental protection that the Sierra Club felt was necessary in the Palm Canyon Wash. I'll point out in some additional exhibits exactly where those areas' concerns are. On the west side of South Palm Canyon Drive, the judgment did talk about the acquisition of lands. And Jing, if you could put up, I believe, the next exhibit. There was a concern on the west side of Palm Canyon, which has no direct relationship to the golf course. The golf course doesn't come across South Palm Canyon Drive, but the testimony and materials that you've received certainly bring the issue into play from the Sierra Club's perspective. The area in green and blue had designations in the judgment that called it restricted area. The intent was Canyon Development would have to use its best efforts to acquire that property and set it aside for public open space. Canyon Development is no longer involved. There's no commitment on their part anymore. The city, working with the property owner, Mr. Gans, received that property in slashed green as a donation. It's 100 acres in size, and that property is owned by the city for public open space purposes. If you take a look at the restricted area, that's 85% of the restricted area. We own it. We don't have to use good faith to go out and get it anymore. It's owned by the city for open space. The area outlined in blue, it was a 20-acre parcel. That particular parcel, approximately seven acres, that's not crosshatched, the approximate permitted development area, that area was allowed to have seven residential units. And the rest of it needs to be acquired. We've told the Sierra Club. We've told Mr. Gans' representatives. We've told Palm Canyon LLC. It's the city's intent in its regulatory process to make sure that we use our best efforts to see that the area restricted ends up in open space, and I don't think anybody's disagreed with that. The issue with the Sierra Club is the rest of the half section to the east, where they'd like to talk about the critical habitat line for peninsula bighorn sheep, and they'd like to probably negotiate more open space, and I'll show you that on some additional exhibits. The key component of the project is really how is the golf course graded. The majority of the golf course is in a floodway, designated flood plain. There's a Riverside County Flood Control easement across the property. What we have done is, from the city's standpoint in conjunction with a request from the Development Authority, we've asked Riverside County Flood Control to review the grading plan, to make sure the hydrology works and the flood control works, and they're currently reviewing that plan. Before the project can proceed, we do need acknowledgement from Riverside County that they're comfortable with the grading. And on the east side of the property in the Palm Canyon Wash, we're going to need Army Corps and California Department of Fish and Game and state water quality permits before grading can occur in those areas. Those are conditions of approval, and those agencies have been contacted and will be contacted by the Development Authority with regards to their permitting authority. The primary public comment that's occurred has come from the Sierra Club relative to environmental issues, and I'd like to go over four environmental issues fairly quickly, and then I'll show you the exhibits. The Sierra Club has contended that there's a peninsula bighorn sheep corridor from east to west that use the golf, uses the golf course for the sheep to migrate from the Santa Sento Mountains to the Santa Rosa Mountains. California Department of Fish and Game has submitted a letter on this project where they basically said, we think there may be a need for a fence to possibly keep sheep off of the golf course so that they don't have the problems that are theorized that occur when sheep get on golf courses. So Cal Fish and Game says, in their letter, there's no corridor. In fact, we think we may need to fence it, and they submitted a similar letter for the property to the south. Secondly, we've had meetings with Cal Fish and Game and Federal Fish and Wildlife where we've discussed this project. We've discussed the corridor issue. They have not told us that there's a corridor there. Thirdly, the critical habitat boundary for the peninsula bighorn sheep does not include a corridor. The recovery plan does not include a corridor in that location, and we don't believe there is a corridor. And if it, there were a corridor there, it's a dangerous corridor. The original EIR and the environmental assessment for these, this project area clearly talked about bighorn sheep, clearly talked about the possibility and need for fencing to make sure that we nudge the sheep to the south where the Indian Canyon's Heritage Park exists. A lot of publicly-owned and tribally-owned open space in that area. That is probably a more suitable corridor. In the event there is a problem with bighorn sheep, Cal Fish and Game has asked the developer in the city to install a fence, and there's a condition of approval to install a fence. The next issue is the Casey's June beetle. That's a small beetle that's been known to be in the general Palm Canyon area and up into the Smoke Tree Ranch area. You've got several biological reports from noted biologists. They've identified the issue. The Aguacaliente Band of Keweenah Indians has a multi-species habitat management plan that they've adopted and sent out for public review. There's a mitigation fee required in that plan. The developer's going to pay the mitigation fee for the new acreage to serve. There's actually limited impact on Casey's June beetle, and the majority of the Casey's June beetle habitat, if you can get biologists to agree where it all is, is not on this property. It's probably to the northwest of, or northeast of this property in the Palm Canyon Wash and possibly extending up into the Smoke Tree Ranch. Sierra Club has talked about piecemeal development. We have a specific plan. The land uses that you're looking at tonight are exactly what the specific plan called out for. As far as the land use, we're making some adjustments to that. We're not changing the intended land use in this area. The stipulated judgment I've already referred to, you know, we believe we're acting in good faith. We're believing the developers have acted in good faith, and that all of the environmental protection in that stipulated judgment is not in jeopardy. In fact, it's being complied with. If I could, I'd like to show you some exhibits and elaborate on some of the comments I've made. The original Palm Canyon specific plan, actual development plan by Canyon Development is shown here. And on the South Palm Canyon side, there was golf out exactly to where the Development Authority is proposing. The golf then circulated back down closer to Bogert Trail, and we're basically saying at that line, all residential, all golf, instead of about 50/50 on that property. Not changing the intent. We're just reallocating where the residential development would be, putting the golf where it has to be because of the lease, all on the leased land with the exception of 291 feet in the Wash. That's fee land. After giving you a lot of the administrative background, I'd like to actually show you the proposed golf course. The golf course would use the existing clubhouse located off of Murray Canyon. You would basically have returning nines on the golf course so that it would play the way golf courses are supposed to play. The golf course would come up to South Palm Canyon and Bogert Trail. The golf hole on the south side of Bogert Trail will be shortened to a tighter par three, a little bit better because of the width of that area. And you would still cycle back, and they'd propose four additional lakes and a combination of planting with a desert theme on the golf course with some pockets of some fairly large, more native or drought-tolerant-type landscaping to give it a desert feel. And as I think everybody knows, they've got a palm tree collection like no other place, and they're going to keep those palm trees on the golf course, and it's going to come out and look like a mature golf course when they're finished. On Murray Canyon Drive, there's an existing equestrian trail that would be upgraded adjacent to Murray Canyon. This earth and embankment for the flood control facility would be landscaped, probably hydroceded so that there would be immediate effect for erosion control as well as immediate color in the first season. The east side of the golf course, as you get out to the Palm Canyon Wash, would then feather to a more natural desert condition to an actual restoration program that would be overseen by project biologist and landscape architect. This is the most exciting exhibit. The final development plan that we're, the Planning Commission recommended approval of, is the actual grading plan for the golf course. And as you can see, it's multiple sheets, a lot of information relative to grading. With flood control, there's going to be some revisions in the Bogert Trail and South Palm Canyon area to accommodate some of the storm flows. And in the middle of the project, in this area, we'll anticipate some revisions to, again, make a wider area for the storm flows to go through and make sure the hydraulic capacity is maintained. If the council adopts the resolutions as outlined, you would be approving the grading plan, and then we would finish up with flood control and the technical review of it. And after describing the project, I'd like to come back and end with a discussion of the environmental issues again, just so that the council and the public understand the situation. Like to start with peninsula bighorn sheep. This exhibit is the Critical Habitat Plan or map and boundary for the peninsula bighorn sheep by Fish and Wildlife Service. The boundary in the Palm Canyon Wash has a sawtooth jagged edge that clearly, when we meet with Fish and Wildlife Service, they say was done by the computer because they can't draw diagonal lines with this computer program. So they had to use the geography that basically the computer would let them draw. We even have places that the critical habitat goes north of Highway 111. What we've heard from Fish and Wildlife is this line actually is roughly the toe of slope, does not affect this project. slope, does not affect this project, and it's not within critical habitat. Clearly, they did not show this as a corridor for bighorn sheep. And as you take a look at the culture and the amount of development, you've got roadways, golf course, flood control facilities, bridges, houses, all kinds of things. Not a good corridor to maintain under any circumstances. Has every element that's identified in the recovery plan that says is unsafe for sheep. We don't understand why the Sierra Club thinks that that's a viable corridor, except to try to link the golf course to property that's not even contiguous to their golf course and that they don't own or control. From the standpoint of ownership, good faith effort of public acquisition. Golf course is located in this area. The Palm Canyon LLC project is located here. The area that was restricted is the hillside lands. This label should be 100 acres. The city owns the area in blue here, 100 acres in Section 34. The city owns 119 acres in Section 34. The city has conservation easements and restrictions on an additional 42 acres in Section 34. Not only did we pick up the restricted lands, the city also owns all this other acreage. What the Sierra Club would like is for the city to not allow any development past the critical habitat boundary, which is roughly right here on this exhibit. And I think what they're trying to ask for is the city not allow any development in that area as a requirement of this project. We just don't think that that's got a nexus. We've told the developer of this property that they're going to have some pretty significant issues to deal with. That property owner is very much aware that they have to deal with that at the time they try to entitle that property. This exhibit really starts to show you the corridor, and I won't spend much time on it, but basically the way we looked at it was you take a look at the golf course, existing housing, existing housing, a project under construction, roadways, probably not a likely corridor. If it is used, it's probably unsafe. The possible bighorn dispersal corridor is to the south, and the exhibit that we left up here is from the tribal habitat conservation plan. And as you can see, subject property is located right up in here. And the primary migration corridor goes back into the Palm Canyon area, secondary migration corridor. If you take a look at where the edge of development is, Belmonte, all the way down, you have one, two, three, four, four linear miles of open corridor that has less roadways, less development, primarily has a parking lot at Hermits Bench and some hikers. Certainly not the type of conflict that you have in this location. And from steep slope to steep slope, it's narrower. This is the whitest part of Palm Canyon, probably the most dangerous place, even if it was a natural setting for the sheep to cross. City owns property from, or Chino Canyon, all the way along the frontal, everything in blue, the city owns. What the city doesn't own on the frontal slope almost down to the valley floor, the tribal council owns as part of the Takwitz Canyon facility. So if you look at Chino Canyon, all the way down to this property, the city and/or the tribe owns the entire hillside, almost down to the valley floor and almost all areas for open space and recreational type uses. Again, the Sierra Club seems to be concerned about this from a bighorn sheep standpoint. Very quickly on the issue of Casey's June beetle. Casey's June beetle has been spotted in these areas, and over in here, in the Palm Canyon Wash up towards Smoke Tree, in the Smoke Tree Ranch area. It's found quite often in the pools at Smoke Tree Ranch. But when you start moving south, it appears through the literature I've seen, you see fewer and fewer June beetles, that there's probably more up here. The proposed golf course affects seven acres. They're going to take out this portion of the existing golf course. It's about three acres. The net impact in the Palm Canyon Wash is four acres. The Planning Commission felt it's fully mitigated, that it's not a significant impact, and we think we have enough information in the record. Mr. Mayor, it's late. I'm tired. I'll try to answer any more questions.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Council, this is a public hearing. Before we open the hearing, do you have any questions on staff's report? Okay, seeing no questions, we'll turn to the public hearing. I have a number of cards before me. First speaker, and again, I'll ask you to come down so we can form a line. Joan Taylor, Wayne Brechtel, Dana Prieto, and Ron Gregory, followed by Tom Davis and Nicole Christ. Everyone got their queuing number? I'll go through what we need to do again. Joan Taylor first, and then Wayne. Is Wayne still here, Joan? Yeah, there's Wayne. This is a public hearing. You'll have five minutes. There's a clock that'll count down from five minutes. And when you start, the clock will begin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Joan Taylor. I'm representing Sierra Club. I just want to enter some more documents on the record regarding Casey's June beetle and peninsular bighorn sheep. Regarding Casey's June beetle, the Sierra Club notified the city of Palm Springs, Aguacaliente, Seavag, the Mountains Conservancy, and BLM over two years ago that we believe this species is endangered and we're prepared to petition for emergency listing. We met with representatives from these entities, and we're persuaded to wait in order for the HCP effort to create a preserve. Nothing has happened, either in the Coachella Valley Preserve or the tribal one. There is no proposed preserve. The EA fails to adequately identify the impacts to Casey's June beetle or to mitigate them, as we've outlined. In addition to other comments we have made, there really is 10 acres of habitat proposed to be lost, seven on the Wash bench to the east of the golf course, and three on the southwest corner of the renovation. The Green Letter is in your file on this. Three acres is contradictory. It asserts that the area's been found lacking in Casey's June beetle. There's nothing on the record to substantiate that. I phoned Cam Barrows, who has trapped out there, and he recalls trapping on both the northeast and the southeast corner and finding Casey's June beetle. I've submitted photos here that show the area is well and richly vegetated, much like the southeast corner. Green also asserts that the 14 acres at this junction were formerly proposed as essential to Casey's June beetle, but they were withdrawn because of the tribal preserve, and therefore he assumes they were on the west side. But the tribal preserve includes lands both to the east and the west of Palm Canyon Drive and would include lands, the three acres proposed to be affected. Basically, regarding the quality of Casey's June beetle habitat, the literature is clear that canyon bottom habitat is not considered as good habitat, and therefore the whitewater habitat would not be as good, nor would be the so-called replacement habitat of three acres in the Wash. The Desert Water Agency pipelines that are to preserve the, serve the project will move up Palm Canyon Wash to do so, and they have the potential to impact Casey's June beetle habitat. They need to be reviewed as part of this project. Green Letter also asserts that 21 acres formerly proposed as a preserve, that the 296 acres include 21 acres already protected. We know of no such protected property. These areas need to be identified as to ownership and protection measures in place at this Regarding peninsular bighorn, the peninsular bighorn have been documented on the north end of the Santa, very north end of the Santa Roses by myself, Jim Cornet, and others. They've been seen in Palm Canyon Wash and even over on the golf course. The assertion that Fish and Wildlife Service drew the critical habitat line erroneously is not supported. We've entered documents on the record that show that they purposely include Wash habitat. The corridor was a focus of discussion within the last two years. And a field trip, I went on with Tom Davis, Scott McCarthy, and Bill Haver. And we went over to the Arenas Soluvial Camp, looked across at the corridor, and the Fish and Wildlife Service asserted that if that corridor was going to be lost, that the Arenas Canyon development would have to be pushed further down to allow a corridor on that There've been assertions that Fish and Game and Fish and Wildlife Service are in close communication, and that a letter from one agency is tantamount to a letter from another. There's no support for that assertion, and often Fish and Wildlife Service takes a much more conservationist stance. That is why being a state-listed species since the 1970s did little to help peninsular bighorn, and their population plummeted in that time from 1,170 to less than 300, and a federal listing was warranted. The Department of Fish and Game Letter is narrowly focused on the golf course renovation. And however, the rest of the specific plan, as well as other projects in the area, will surely will close off the corridor. One exists now. There's ample evidence to show that more than one animal has been using this. So there must be something done to address leaving the corridor open on the west side and observing critical habitat boundaries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wayne Brechtel, followed by Dana Prieto.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, Wayne Brechtel on behalf of the Sierra Club. I feel a little bit outdone here. I do not have a wall to pull out for you like Mr. Evans, and so next time I think I'll come a little early just to put something up there. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Sierra Club, and I think Mr. Evans, in a lot of ways, encapsulated our concerns, and I've submitted substantial correspondence. In fact, I submitted a letter today, and I'd just like to confirm that the council got that letter today. I won't repeat its contents, but I raise concerns regarding the proceedings and such. Let me just cut to the chase and try to distill it down in a way that explains what is our concern. The peninsular bighorn sheep, absolutely unabashedly, we're concerned with this species' extinction. We want to prevent that from happening. This project, this golf course project, is one in a series of projects that are well underway, either construction-wise or planning-wise, that will effectively develop that valley. There is subdivisions to the south of the golf course that will be constructed. The golf course will expand to the east, and there is a development to the west into the Arenas Canyon. These are all part of the specific plan. They are all going to impact this species in one way or another. Most definitely, the project to the west will have the greatest impact. The projects were approved as part of a comprehensive specific plan. It was a subject of a stipulated judgment, and a common developer who was going to use its efforts, if you will, to help preserve habitat to the west and to help mitigate impacts. And I submit that there's been discussion about making successors comply with this judgment to do things such as purchasing habitat to the west. The Development Authority is a successor to Canyon Development, and I have heard nothing this evening about the Development Authority using some of its efforts to help preserve property to the west end of this specific plan area. And it's somewhat of a shell game here to say that this is isolated, it has nothing to do with one or the other. We have developers, the authority and the developer, working closely together, and I don't say this in a mean, devious way, there's nothing wrong with that, but Palm Canyon LLC is providing the property to the east for this golf course expansion. Palm Canyon LLC is working with the authority, I believe, to transfer the hotel down to the golf course. None of that's before you tonight, and it should be. You should be considering this project as a whole so that we would not leave the last link, the last part of this project, the most important with respect to peninsular bighorn sheep, to the end so that there's no one left except for one person holding the bag to say, "Well, we can't do it. It's too much of a burden on us." It should be considered now, under the context of SEQA, the Endangered Species Act, and the stipulated judgment. Turning to the Casey's June beetle, this is a somewhat perplexing issue for the Sierra Club, one that I think has a solution, and it's frustrating it hasn't occurred. All experts agree this species satisfies criteria for being listed as endangered. It was at one time part of the Coachella Valley Habitat Conservation Plan. It has been removed. We read information that it may be part of the Development Authority's Habitat Conservation Plan. We've now learned that it is not. So we know there is no current plan in place to assure this species that qualifies as an endangered species will be preserved. The second thing we know, regardless of all the letters and all the opinions, this project will at least destroy seven acres of Casey's June beetle habitat. I submit it's probably closer to 10 to 13 acres. That is the expansion to the east. It will not be mitigated by anything that's been presented here tonight. One, payment of a fee. A fee means nothing if there is no plan in place to put it into a meaningful use. There is no identified habitat to purchase with that fee. The three acres that is being purportedly preserved at the east end of the golf course as mitigation, that's a little disingenuous. That's basically at the east end where the channel's too thin. It's expanding the channel for floodwaters. It's a floodwater expansion. It's not viable Casey's June beetle habitat. The four acres being preserved near the airport, not Casey's June beetle habitat. On the undisputed facts, whether you disagree or agree with many of the opinions there, you are destroying by approving this project Casey's June beetle habitat without any meaningful mitigation for that. And that's an issue that we've litigated before, and candidly, it's not something that we had hoped would be the case here. This is actually something, given the earlier plans to preserve habitat for this species, it was the genuine belief and hope of this air club that a petition to list this species would not be necessary. I would just close by submitting that the course we're under tonight, if the project goes forward as approved, allowing destruction of this habitat without any action, without a plan, much less a plan to make a plan, there's few options left to an environmental organization such as Sierra Club, and it's an option that we'd rather not exercise. We'd ask you to exercise your discretion and direct that this issue be mitigated before this project is considered for approval. Thank you.
Dana Prieto.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. I'll make it quick, because my pool time starts at 11 o'clock at the city pool. I gotta get going over there. I'm not going to really get into the environmental issues. I think that we can resolve it, even though Mr. Brechtel had, again, I'm being a proud chairman of the ACDA. I think we can resolve the issues with the environmental problem, so I'm not going to get into it, and our staff will do that. I just wanted to kind of give the history of this project. Last time I was at this mic was 1985, when Mr. Bogart was at the helm, and it had to do with the Andreas Coe project. And now I'm in charge of the Cannon Hotel project, and in the world, that's full circle. I think that if you don't approve this project tonight, you know, Palm Springs is on a rebirth, and you know, the tribe's got a lot to do with it. And I think by getting you guys' support tonight on this project, you know, that hotel and the golf course was very, very well-known back in the '60s, early '70s for the boxing community, from Little Danny Red Lopez to Sugar Ray Leonard to Marvin Hagler, all trained there before they went to Vegas, before Vegas became big. And I was a young Indian child that'd just sneak under the tent to watch the boxers train. And then in the Hollywood world, I mean, going through old pictures that I've found there, I mean, Lee Iacocca, Jay Weintraub, O.J. Simpson, all were part of this hotel. And if you talk to the older community, everybody has a story about this project, whether it be the golf course or the hotel. And I think it's Palm Springs diamond that's kind of got not shining anymore. And I think this opportunity, along with the tribe and the city, could be a great relationship for not only tourism industry, but for the community itself. The plans that we have for the hotel, which we haven't implemented yet or exposed to the city council, I think you guys will be very, very impressed. So I'm just here to get your support on this golf course with the conditions that we work everything out. So thank you for your support.
Thank you, Dana. Mr. Ron Gregory.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name's Ron Gregory, project landscape architect. I will make this very mercifully short. Our office has prepared design for this project, which we feel represents state-of-the-art, attention to water-efficient plant material, irrigation design, a lot of sensitivity to adjoining developments so that we maintain a similar theme in planting design and materials. I'd like to say that if you have any questions, I'll be here to answer them for you. So I think that probably should be enough for right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Mr. Davis, followed by Nicole Christ.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Happy holidays. I've been asked to come here to give an overview and a clarification possibly of the tribal habitat conservation plan, and how it would or could apply to the project itself. It is a recent document, everybody's trying to get familiar with it. Basically, the project, except for the seven acres, which is actually outside the boundary of the reservation, therefore not applicable to the habitat conservation plan, is a renovation, and as such, is not a covered project at the plan. However, there are certain aspects of the plan that would be applicable if it was a covered project. And I want to kind of give an overview of the fact that the plan does address Peninsula Big Horn sheep. It has delineated a sensitive area for the Big Horn sheep, and you've seen the exhibit where it shows the logical corridors. The project, the tribal habitat conservation plan is divided into two very basic, simple areas, a valley floor area, conservation area, and a mountains and canyons conservation area. And they're obviously defined by the distinction between the valley floor and the toe of the slope of the mountains and canyons. Half the reservation approximately is in each area. The valley floor area, which this project is in, and if it was a new project, whatever the case may be, would really be a mitigated-by-fee project, like most of the valley floor area is an urbanized area and subject to other mitigation fees, much like the fringe-toed lizard. So, that would be the case in this area. The habitat conservation plan recognizes that the golf course is not a viable corridor. This we've consulted with, with Fish and Wildlife Service, and that's why we have identified a more logical and biologically sound and scientifically supported corridor to the south, as Doug aptly mentioned, the five-mile area that we can work with. With regards to Casey's June beetle, and why the June beetle preservation, the June beetle is not in the plan. Very little, anything is known about the beetle. And as was mentioned in testimony, it's not, and in the EA and in the correspondence, it is not a threatened or endangered species. And I believe, it's our opinion that there's several reasons for that. It definitely does exist. It generally exists in this area. Very little is known about it, and that is, that means that very little is scientifically supported to list a species at this time. And that's why we did not, one of the reasons why we did not include it in the plan. In addition to that, our two surveys that we've done, which were rather inconclusive, and therefore have not been incorporated or publicized, have shown that the beetle does not exist, as we can tell, on the reservation, as within the reservation boundaries as habitat. Now, the beetle that we, something that we do know about the beetle is it flies, and it's attracted to light. And so, that it can occur, and you can trap it thousands of feet from its habitat. It occurred, you can trap it in a street lamp, in a pool, and in neighboring, you know, urbanized areas. So, basically, the fact that it is not either a threatened or endangered listed species, the fact that we know very little about the species, and the fact that the habitat that may or may or not occur is not on the reservation, it's not in the plan, and there is no anticipation to preserve it within the plan, unless there's other sound scientific evidence that supports such a listing or preservation. So, that's basically the overview of the habitat conservation plan and the project, and I'll be happy to answer any questions later. Thanks.
Thank you, Tom. Final card is Nicole Christ, please. Anyone else wishing to address, please come forward at this time. Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Nicole Christ. I'm with Terra Nova Planning, and we represent ACDA on this project. We also prepared the environmental documentation, including the response to comments that you have before you this evening. To keep it short, the ACDA has worked very hard to conform with the standards and requirements in the specific plan, as well as the stipulated judgment. And as Doug pointed out, this project does conform to both those documents. We've also developed all of the environmental review information that you have before you this evening, tiered off of existing certified and adopted documents, including the 1991 EIR and the 1994 mitigated negative declaration. The proposed project before you this evening represents a lowering of impacts from the previous environmental review that's been done for the project. I think that's been demonstrated in the description of the project and the discussion that Doug gave you regarding the environmental impacts. As regards the mitigation for Casey's June beetle, the three acres that will be renaturalized in the wash is located about 750 feet south of the seven acres that Mr. Brechtel claimed to be June beetle habitat. So, we would assert that that is June beetle habitat and is an appropriate mitigation for three of the seven acres that the project will be disturbing. In addition, the Sierra Club, in the materials that they submitted, that were distributed to you from yesterday's planning commission meeting, included data from Frank T. Hovor, who is a biologist who has done a great deal of Casey's June beetle habitat investigation in the valley, and who, in a letter dated April 3, 1997, identified the Whitewater River Channel, parallel to the airport, as a potential area for Casey's June beetle habitat, which is the area where we are seeking to replace the additional four acres of land that California Department of Fish and Game has requested that we replace to make up our seven acres. We believe that we have a sound, less impacting project that conforms with the city's standards, as well as the legal standards that have been established for this project, and we urge you to approve it this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council during this public hearing? Good seeing no one. We'll close the public hearing. Join the council for questions or comments.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Alashar.
There was a comment in Mr. Brechtel's letter concerning a conflict of interest at the planning commission level. There, we did have a conflicted commissioners, and we're in a position where we had to draw lots. Lots were drawn. There were three non-conflicted members. The one member, the member who drew a lot to participate, only participated for purposes of making up the quorum. They did not participate in the discussion, abstained on the vote. The only members of the commission that voted were members who had no conflict. So, I think we complied with appropriate procedure on that. I also did want to make a comment about the litigation almost a decade ago, dealing with this area. There was a lawsuit. There was a settlement agreement as part of that lawsuit. There has been concern on the part of the Sierra Club as to the city's attitude and position with regards to that lawsuit. The environmental issues were litigated. There was a specific settlement agreement with provisions concerning the development of the property. Included in your staff report is an extensive provision-by-provision comparison of the judgment and the compliance of this project with that judgment. The city, at all times, has told the Sierra Club, and I'll repeat it again for the record, we believe that the judgment applies. It is the city's position that any developer in the specific plan area will be required by the city to comply with that judgment. So, we think it continues to have application. The issue of whether a developer who acquired no rights from Canyon is technically a successor in interest is a legal question that we're not passing judgment on. I don't know whether they are or are not a successor in interest. They acquired no rights through Canyon. We don't think it's, it matters particularly, because the city's position is, we will require all development entities out there to comply with the judgment, so the judgment continues in full force and effect, and the matters that were resolved in that judgment continue to be resolved. So, I just wanted to make that clear for the record, and there are conditions of approval in the resolution before you tonight, which continue to apply the conditions of that judgment to the future development.
Thank you, Mr. Alashar. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Oden.
If I could get an explanation on the discrepancy of the seven acres or 10 acres.
I kept one exhibit, just in case you ask the question. The area in question, the existing golf course, obviously is shown in the aerial photograph. The area that's approximately seven acres of expansion is located in this area. The area that's going to be reclaimed would be an extension and connecting those two lines. So, you pick up that area, as far as all that golf improvement and all the fill material will be taken out. So, if you take a look at that, seven acres, and that, three acres, that there would be an increase, argument of 10 acres disturbed. If you take a look at the Palm Canyon LLC project, which is shown here, and what they're proposing to do, they're actually going to widen the channel out, wider than the stipulated judgment in this area, which is in this area. They were only required to be 300 feet wide, and this section, they're going to be approximately 500 feet wide. So, in fact, that area eventually will not be disturbed, and you'll have a wider section here. And again, when we've taken a look at the data, and I think Tom Davis did an outstanding job of summarizing the data, start taking a look at the different surveys, and I've talked to Frank Hovor, too, and you put a light here to see if they're on that site. They can come from over here, they can come from here. You don't know where the beetle came from, because they fly to the light, and they fly very quickly to the light. The incidence of the beetle's occurrence increases, it seems, as you go to the northwest up towards Smoke Tree. No development proposed in the wash in that area. A good portion of it's got flood control easements on it. And then you get to the Smoke Tree property, and a good portion of their property have private deed restrictions, to where there's no imminent development pending. So, when we've taken a look at this, we don't see conclusive evidence that there's a significant impact that cannot be mitigated when you take a look at the limitations of the impact, and then you come back and take a look at where the commitments were relative to what should and should not be developed. We're trying to live up to the agreements, and we would hope that, at the end of the day, all other parties would look at the legal agreements that were so bitterly discussed and debated, and then agreed upon back in 1993.
Additional questions or comments?
No, Mr. Mayor, because he covered, Tom covered my question on the, on Casey's June beetle.
Mr. Mayor. Mills.
Mr. Evans, I don't see on the plan a specific indication of the location of the clubhouse. At least I didn't see it, which doesn't mean it's not there necessarily.
Yeah, the clubhouse would be the exact same clubhouse they have today. They didn't really show it on the landscape plan exhibit. It's the area north of the wash. They're going to come in and basically use the existing clubhouse, and then at some point in the future, there may be some renovations or changes to that. The intent is to try to reopen in November with the existing clubhouse.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to ask a question on, what is the record on the sheep?
Well, clearly, as we've looked at it, and we've met with Fish and Wildlife Service and Fish and Game as recently as the last six weeks, I believe, where we talked about this project, we briefed them on the project, we reminded them that they had all of the environmental documents, and we did receive comments from Cal Fish and Game, that they did not seem to see a concern about sheep, other than if they do go on the golf course, let's fence them off. Sierra Club contends that there's a corridor. We look very carefully at the recovery plan, and every element of danger for sheep, vegetation that they maybe shouldn't eat, vegetation that's moist, that possibly has parasites that could cause them to become infected, cars, people, dogs, development, everything exists in that corridor, that when we talk about other projects, we're told, "My God, if you build the golf course, you're going to kill the sheep." We've heard that from the Sierra Club, we've heard it from others. In this case, we're saying, "It's an existing golf course. We're going to do a minor expansion, and if the sheep become a problem on the golf course or around it, we'll fence them off." The State Department of Fish and Game has asked us to do that. It's exactly what they say in the recovery plan to do with sheep and golf courses, if there becomes a problem. The philosophy of corridors and sheep and golf courses has evolved from, at Shadow Rock, we were mandated to leave the golf course open so the sheep could come down on the golf course and pass through it. Now, we're told, "We need to fence them." In the recovery plan, it basically said, to some degree, "Let's watch and monitor and see how they react, and then if there's a problem, let's fence it." It's exactly what we're doing with this project. If we need to fence, we'll fence it. If the sheep never come on the golf course, there's never a problem. It'll stay open, and probably no need for a sheep fence. And in the specific plan in '91 and '94, the west side was required to be fenced to keep people out of the sheep habitat. So, we addressed the corridor then, and '91 was a threatened species, and the science said, "Close it off in '91, because we don't want the sheep coming down through the development." And that was a mitigation measure of that project in 1991 and 1994, that nobody litigated.
But in '91, when they were stating in the conditions to close it off, to prevent the use of the corridor, it was not fenced, because the project didn't go forward, and the corridor, which in theory was there, has no evidence of being used?
If it's, the evidence is that they've seen sheep on one side.
And the other, but not on the corridor.
And the other, but nobody's seen the sheep go across recently, I think historically, when there was much less development in this area. You probably had sheep on the valley floor, and they may have passed through the golf course, and occasionally a ram. You know, we've had them on East Palm Canyon Drive. You know, does that mean it's a corridor? No, it means the sheep got in the wrong place and had to be rescued.
Okay. And Cal Fish and Game wants fencing, wants...
They agreed with the mitigation measures in the report. When and if there's a problem, install the fence.
When and if.
When and if.
All right.
Okay. Turns the council might have questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mills.
Just, not so much a question, but more of a comment, and that is to the, to the ACDA, and also the preparer of the document. I went through this, we had it a little earlier, and I went through it for what we have recently received, and, you know, having gone through several of these, this one is extremely complete, in my estimation, and I would like to compliment the ACDA staff and the preparers of a very, a very good and concise environmental document.
Very good. I'll take it a step further. I think that the cooperative measures that all players have performed extremely well here.
I think that the cooperative measures that all players have performed extremely well here. I know city staff has been working as fast and expeditiously as possible without leaving anything behind. And the ACDA has been cooperative across the board. The consultants selected have done an excellent job of keeping pace with government for a change as opposed to the other way around. But this is obviously an important asset for the city of Palm Springs. I think we've all talked about this in the past, and we are pleased to see this thing before us. An excellent addition for Palm Springs, great advancement for the ACDA. And again, it speaks to the partnership between the two entities. It's rewarding to see things working. I liked the phrase that you had, that we are succeeding, and we got to continue in that path. Counsel, what's your pleasure? There are three resolutions before you requiring action. Your motion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Oden.
I will move the three resolutions.
Thank you, Mr. Oden.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mills. Any additional comments, questions at this time? Pretty good seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Aye. You got a 4-0, it passes. Thank you, gentlemen. We'll now turn to council comments, announcements, or inter-agency reports. The only announcement I want to make, I know it's late, but this is our last meeting for the year. We will not be meeting over the next week, and we will, in fact, be meeting in January on the second. In case anyone's getting close to turning things off, we'll announce that later on. Are there any additional comments from the council at this time? I'm looking for council comments, announcements, or inter-agency reports. No, that's good by me, I'm asking.
Then I need to do a request here, I'll forego the report. But I would like staff to, I have a copy of the ranch and Mirage conversion ordinance for their mobile homes. I would like to give this to our staff to have them to follow up on this to see if we could perhaps develop a more comprehensive ordinance that can assist us and protect our mobile homeowners for the future.
Thank you, Mr. Oden. Any other comments, reports? Although a request at the end of the agenda, we'll allow it to move forward at this time, sir. Let's go to the legislative calendar. Item 10 is parks, beautification, and tree program policy.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, I'd be very happy, in the interest of time, to remove this from the agenda this evening, bring it back at the next meeting. There's, it's no time requirement for this, and we do have a rather lengthy discussion on the convention center.
Mr. Mayor, could I just suggest that the prices are double-checked before they come back? I felt that they were a little bit low. It seems like when we did the dog park four years ago, we were paying at least $250 for plaques then, and I can't imagine that they're the same price now. So if they could just be double-checked?
Okay. All right, we can bring this back for consideration at some future date. The city manager requests we'll continue this item. Bring it back maybe in January.
Two weeks, yes.
One more second.
We're not withdrawing it?
Got it, item 12, then? Convention Center Expansion Phase One Trade Contract Awards, staff report, please.
I think we need, the city clerk, do we need a motion on that last item?
If you continue it to a date certain, yes.
Well, then we can just withdraw it, and I will bring it back at another date.
All right, so moved. All right, there you go. All right, item 12, Convention Center Expansion Phase One Trade Contract Awards.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. The next two items have to do with us moving forward on the convention center in your direction. The first one is regarding Phase One. It is the contract on the kitchen and some of the additional space vis a vis the Old Springs Theater. And I would ask Mr. Smoot to give the direction on the staff report here. The trade, the trade contracts were opened, and that is what we're asking for your approval this evening. Thank you, Mr. Smoot.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Before you is nine-minute orders and a resolution. Resolution was with the original council report that's in your packet. What we're asking you to do is award contracts for demolition, structural steel, framing, kitchen equipment, plumbing, HVAC, and electrical. We're asking you to reject all the bids on concrete as they were in excess of our estimate, and we want to try to rebid those again, and we have time for that. And we're also asking you, on the kitchen equipment, to declare that the Drury Duncan bid, which was actually the lowest bid, is non-responsive because the bid was conditioned. And that is basically our report. The good news from this is, is these are the major contracts, with the exception of one more, which we're working on. These all came within very close range of our estimate, and we believe we're off to a good start. And we'll start construction in the next two weeks if you approve these. I think there was also a question concerning the plumbing bid, which was less than $1,000 difference between the two. And one of those firms was a firm from the valley. And the question was whether or not our existing preference applies to them, or we could give any preference to them. We do have a preference in our procurement ordinance, but it only applies to Palm Springs contractors, not anybody else in the valley, and so we have to take the low bidder.
Got it.
And in that case, it is DK Mechanical, which is out of the area. They have done a lot of work here in the past and do use local tradesmen when they're down here. But they are an out-of-town contractor.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Hodges?
I had inquired about that one because I had not heard of DK Mechanical, and I know Kincaid is in the valley. It's really a shame, it's $476 difference. And I'm sure that there are many plumbers that work for Kincaid that live in the city of Palm Springs. And that's unfortunate.
Well, we could bring back at some future date the idea of the preferential treatment on this. We are sequential thing, Palm Springs, then Valley, then California, how you want to structure. That can be brought back for review. I think you're right, Dan, it's so close, and it's such a shame. Helps the local economy.
Let's get clarification on this. We've got this supplemental report that came out, and I'm sure members got it faxed or handed to them. Going through this trade one, your demo is okay. Trade four, concrete and reinforced, you want to throw it out?
That is correct.
All right, trade six is okay as low bid. Trade 13, framing and drywall is okay as low bid. Trade 28, kitchen equipment, you've got the low bid, but it's conditioned, so you want it to be non-responsive and thrown out, so we go to the second bidder, Trimark?
That is correct.
Correct. On second page, 12A2, trade 29 is plumbing. Again, based on this prior discussion, we're going to go with DK Mechanical as low bid. Trade 30, HVAC, you're going to go with Cort, low bid. And 32, you're going to go with Cort again, low bid. Is that right?
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question?
Please.
On electrical, why would there be such a big difference in price? I mean, it's, yeah. Are we sure that the one we're taking is correct?
I need to, I'll answer that question, but I need to back up on one, too. The trade 32, that's not, the low bidder was not Couts, it's Cove Electric, I'm sorry.
That's, Cove Electric, not?
Yes.
Oh, locally here.
Yes.
Okay.
But it is correct on trade 30 right above it for Couts Heating?
That is correct.
You? Okay.
The minute order is correct with Cove Electric on it, so it's just a typo on the report. And I'm sorry, on the other question?
Differential in price.
Differential in price. It was pretty surprising that it was way out of whack like that. It is slightly less than what our estimate is. So our only guess is that sometime when you're bidding, you hope you're the only bidder, and you get a really good, sweet job. And so we feel very comfortable that Cove actually did the parking structure for us, did a very nice job. So we're comfortable with that.
Okay. Mr. Mayor? Mills?
Mr. Smoot, I had the same question on trade 13. Discrepancy between one and two is pretty heavy from a percentage standpoint. And even though it is over the estimate, I wondered if there's been some evaluation. And I know you just got these yesterday, so.
I don't know that we've done any deeper evaluation, other than we have talked to all these folks, and nobody has claimed that they made some egregious error, and they're complaining about it. So we feel comfortable with the bid going in. This was one of the pre-selected contractors to where you had to be, submit all your resumes and everything before you could actually bid, so we feel comfortable with him.
So all of these subcontractors have pre-qualified?
All but. Were these all pre-qualified, Harold?
All the low bid ones, then?
All but, I believe, two of them that are lesser amounts.
Yes.
Yes, so essentially, yes. We did backgrounds even on the others.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, council, what's your pleasure?
Move the resolution, Mr. Mayor?
Minute orders? What am I looking at here? Minute orders, you got, is it eight?
Eight.
Eight-minute orders and one resolution. The resolution was with your previous thing, which just corrects the change order authority to reflect the bigger budget.
Okay, minute orders, plural, and the resolution? Okay, any additional comments or questions? This is clearly a roll call.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Mr. Olsberg?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye, 5-0 deemed unanimous. Item 13 is Convention Center Expansion Phase Two Architectural Service Contract. Mr. Ready, staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the approval of the contract for the architect. Again, city council took part as a subcommittee in choosing the architect. And what's before you this evening is the actual contract to get them started on the job, which we will ask them to do beginning tomorrow. And again, I would ask Mr. Smoot to give you the details, and Mr. Olscher may have a comment on the contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We have sent to you a supplemental report. The timing on this project is extremely tight in order to get open by Christmas of 2004. If you back up from that date, we need 14 months in which to get this project completed for construction, and it leaves us about eight months of design. When we interviewed this firm, we asked them how long it would normally take them to do this kind of a remodel expansion, and they said 12 to 14 months. So as we entered into this contract negotiations, the basic parameter was, you got eight months to do this, so give us a price for that. And obviously, when you cram things into a shorter period of time, you have to pay a premium for it. We have been negotiating for a whole six and a half days to try to pull this contract together for you. That's why it's all last minute, I apologize for that. However, if we don't start this thing within the next week, you won't make that schedule. So we have tried our best. I've given you some comparisons in here as to what the contract, how the contract would work. We've done some research. Industry standards for a convention center can range anywhere from 9% to 12 to 13% based on complexity and the types of materials and the quality of the design that you end up with. And obviously, the more complex the expansion and the remodel is, this one is, the higher quality design you're expecting as far as materials, and the creativity in the design which was presented to the subcommittee by this firm, you end up at the higher end. The number that I show you on this particular report, less the specialty contracts, is about 12.6% of construction cost, which is comparable to what the final project was at the airport. If you take the reimbursables out of there, which is what you would normally do if you're comparing this to a percentage against construction, this is actually about 11.6%, which is a little bit on, six tenths of a percent above the high end of the range of 9 to 11%. If you give any kind of extra cost for the very short period of time in which they have to perform and the breaking up of the bid packages, because we are actually going to have to start the construction of the underground, the concrete, and order the steel before the drawings are done in order to make the schedule work, there's going to have to be a lot of coordination and breakup during that period of time. At this point, I believe the contract's ready to move forward. We do need to move it forward quickly. We have a first meeting scheduled within a week to take the project off. So I would ask that when you do approve it, if there are some changes you would like in it, that you instruct those changes tonight so that we can move this forward. There are two things that I would ask you to change in the contract or allow me to add to the contract. The first is that we would like to specify who the lead designer and the project architects are, which is part of the agreement we had with them during the interview, that they wouldn't switch team on us, and so we'll put their names in there. And secondly, in looking under Schedule A, item F1A, it talks about the amount of times that they will visit the site. And rather than listing it as bi-weekly, we would like to put into that location that it is actually 100-man trips, which will basically get one person here every week from starting next week until the project is absolutely complete, which is enough amount of folks here that we can adjust it around and have enough representation to keep the very tight schedule going that we have. With that, there is a minute order attached, and the contract in its entirety is attached. And we'd be happy to try to answer your questions. And John Kridicki is here from Fentress Bradburn in the audience, and I'm sure he would be happy to come forward and answer any questions if you have specific ones for the architect. I'd be happy to try to answer your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Smoot. Council questions? Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mills?
I spent quite a bit of time going over this agreement, and I pretty much came to the same conclusions as Mr. Smoot did as far as fee, although I'm going to go over a few things, and then probably after I'm done, and after the rest of the council, if there's any other questions, there'll probably be some questions that the architect could come forward and answer, but I'd rather get them all out there. So he's got his pencil ready, he may be writing them down. I also, as Mr. Smoot did, I looked at that base fee and subtracted out the reimbursables, which are $235,000 for travel and other blueprinting costs and other fees. And I think that's a fair way to do it, to do an apples comparison to a normal architect's fee. And that does take it down to 11.6%, which, as Mr. Smoot said, is the high end of the spectrum to the information I've been able to evaluate. And the question I would like to ask the representative from Fentress when he comes up, if he could put, and I'm not talking about exact dollars necessarily, but a premium that we are paying for our schedule and the fast track process that we are about to engage in. Because I think it's important later on that the public understand what we have really had to do in order to meet the schedule that we're all trying to get this facility online for January '05. Going through the agreement, I'm looking at page five, and I'm looking at an earlier agreement, so I don't know if there's any A numbers on it or what in the agreement that you have, but mine's all marked up, so I didn't switch. But it's page five, under Article 4.3, there's a sentence that says, "The city's policy is to encourage the awarding of subcontracts to persons or entities with offices located within the jurisdictional boundaries of the city of Palm Springs," et cetera, et cetera. I would like to encourage the architect in the use of, or I'd like to encourage the architect to, under the reimbursables that he is going to be looking at, when there will be some major printing costs, I know there will be, there are firms in this city that do that work, and I'd like to see that he investigate the use of those. that do that work, and I'd like to see that he investigate the use of those firms. Also, if you turn over to Exhibit B, I'm looking at four point three, entitled prohibition against subcontracting or assignment. It appears to me that in this, he is listing consultants, and he lists a landscape firm, architecture firm, and again, I would like to refer the architect back to that article I read before, four point three on page five, is that we do have very well-qualified landscape architect firms in this city and this valley that I think would bear review.
Yeah.
The other thing that I think is important to note is that we are, through the process that we have set up with Turner, that we intend to, I'm assuming, move into in a few weeks, similar to what we're doing on the expansion, and with similar to what we've done on the parking structure, we've really taken the estimating portion of the architect's normal duties away. And I would like to have the, and really turn them over to Turner to work in conjunction with the architects, and I would like a comment on that, and what that, or how the architect feels that helps or hinders his effort, and the dollars involved in not having the architect do that, that specific task, other than I know he's responsible for coordination of There is several references in the document to the contractor, and I'm assuming it's just because we haven't had time to go through and change contractor to contract manager, and I'm assuming that will be done. The, under, again, there's no page, under Exhibit A, five A one, refers to the extension of contract administration services for sixty days beyond substantial completion of the work. My hope is that that is to be the completion of the entire project in its entity, because I would imagine this will be released in phases, is just a guess. So, the sixty-day period would start when the last substantial, or last phase reaches substantial completion. Let's see, that's taken care of. That we just discussed. And I'm certainly in agreement with Mr. Smoot's suggestion of altering the agreement regarding visits to a specific number. There will be times where he's needed and not needed during the construction, have the flexibility, well, he's always needed, but I mean, whether he's needed on the site specifically. So, to have that flexibility, to make sure that the architect is available at those times, I think is important and a very good idea. I'd like, I'd like a comment on, I'm under Exhibit B now, on number eleven, regarding your qualification as to ADA. That is a new one on me, and I would sure like to hear an explanation as to how you qualify that.
That's Exhibit B, Chris?
B, yeah.
Section eleven?
Yes, to do with, it says, the Americans with Disabilities Act. The, I understand, in talking with Mr. Smoot, that, and now I'm on Exhibit C, under Schedule of Compensation, and the first grouping of numbers, the reimbursable expenses, which again, as mentioned, is at two thirty-five, that is a maximum, or is that an allowance? It's a maximum. So the reimbursables, based on what's outlined in the contract, will not be extended beyond And those expenses will be billed at cost plus the ten percent. That's, and that is included, the cost and the ten percent is included in the two thirty-five. The, also, I would like a clarification, again, on Exhibit C, on the second grouping of numbers, that the use of those consultants, if they are needed, and I understand they're listed as additional services, that that will not trigger any additional fee, that the administration of these consultants, they will be assigned to the architect, is my understanding, that his fee will not change with the assignment of these consultants if it's deemed that they are necessary. So consequently, my question is, if they are not deemed necessary, is there a credit Then I also wonder why Code Review, again, in the same category, is listed as a consultant, and I would like an explanation as to why you are listing Code Review as a separate consultant rather than included in your normal scope of services. And let's see. Takes care of it.
Okay. There's a handful of questions for you. You got them all written down?
I do.
All right.
My name's John Kudricki. I'm Associate Principal with Fentress Bradburn Architects. If we're awarded the project, I will be your project manager, and I'd like to go through and address Councilman Mills' questions, as I have listed here. First question was in regards to the base fee. What premium would we put, or have we put on our base fee regarding the fast-track process and the schedule? I really don't have a specific number, but I would estimate that to be about a five to ten percent premium for the fast-track schedule and the short timeframe. Second question was, would we be willing to entertain local entities for reimbursable costs and as well as a landscape consultant? And certainly we would. We're certainly interested in any input that staff or city council has regarding the contractors and consultants that we utilize on this project, so we'd certainly be willing to do that. And the next question was regarding the estimating duties of the architect, and whether having Turner Construction as the construction manager doing the estimating helps or hinders in how it would affect our fee. Typically, we would hire a cost consultant to do our cost estimating on a project of this size, and we haven't included that cost consultant in our fee estimate, knowing that Turner would provide us with those estimates. There is a little bit of a concern on our part, because we are basically on the hook for designing or redesigning the project if it does in fact come in over budget, ten percent over budget at this point, and not having control over the estimate if another entity doesn't estimate the job correctly, we are still on the hook for the redesign. That's a little bit of concern, but I don't think it's an issue that will make or break a deal for us here. Next question was your regard to changing the contractor's name to general, excuse me, to contract manager, construction manager on the project. I think that would be easy to take care of. Next question was in regards to Exhibit A, five point eight point one, sixty days beyond substantial completion. We agree typically a project of this sort is turned over to the owner in phases, and our contract would extend to sixty days past the last portion of the project reaching substantial completion. On Exhibit B, number eleven, qualifications for ADA, simply there, Councilman Mills, we're trying to state that the ADA document is really not a prescriptive document. It is a document that is administered by the judicial branch of the government. There are ADA guidelines which are generally accepted, and we will design the project to coincide with those requirements, but it is a process that is activated by a suit against the building owner, and we cannot ensure that, based on following the guidelines, that there will not be a suit brought against the city challenging the design outcome of the project. Next question was Exhibit C, in regards to compensation. The two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars regarding reimbursable costs does include the cost plus ten percent. Next question, the use of consultants if needed. Would there be any additional fee in our contract if those consultants were assigned to us? And if not, are there any credits if we do not utilize those consultants? What we've done is we've included our management fee in the line items on the contract. So if you were to authorize us to utilize the acoustic consultant, our fee for managing that acoustic consultant is in that line item.
Okay.
And then finally, there was one in regards to Code Review as a consultant. Typically, on a project like this, the building code is really not written for a building of this size, and we found that we've been able to more than save the expense of a cost, or I'm sorry, a code consultant, in utilizing their expertise for providing additional travel distance, for providing additional, or mitigating and equivalent procedures for providing life safety in a building that are less costly than typically following the prescriptive nature of the building code. So, we, I pride myself in knowing the building code, but there are fire modeling techniques, there are modeling techniques for tenability of spaces, which the code consultant can perform, that will allow us to design a building in a more economical way. And I believe that's all your questions.
Except for the ones I missed. Just to go back on the ADA question, you know, so you fully intend to design the building to meet the plan check requirements that are given you by the city as far as ADA, and you'll meet all of that, and you will be responsible for those. It's the unknown ones that we all deal with, or fear of dealing with.
That's correct. The prescriptive guidelines, we will comply with. That's correct.
Then, on the, on what you're saying on the code issue, wouldn't that be something that you would normally do? I mean, to have, from a code consultant standpoint, wouldn't you normally, for a project of this scale, wouldn't that be something that you would normally do versus an independent consultant?
We are not equipped with the programs that are required for doing fire modeling, doing tenant space modeling. What we would normally do is work with the building department to come up with equivalent life safety measures that would be less costly for the project, but I believe that utilizing a Code Review consultant who does this exclusively, and the one I'm thinking of is one that we've currently using on Denver, have done it for a number of convention centers around the country, where they're able to take precedent from other areas and utilize that as a means to make the building department feel more comfortable with the, a non-prescriptive approach to code compliance.
And I certainly understand the value of that individual. I've used him myself, and they're amazingly creative, but my question is, why wouldn't that be part of the normal scope? But be that as it may, I understand what you're saying. The only thing that I didn't, that I had skipped over was, and I'm in Exhibit A, and it's F to F, and that's on the last sheet of Exhibit A. It states evaluation, we're talking about additional services. It talks about evaluation of substitutions proposed by the owners, consultants, or contractors in making subsequent revisions to instruments of service resulting therefrom. I understand what you're saying. My only little caveat that I'd like to put on that would be during or after working drawings, or the start of construction documents, in that you're going through some prelim phases, design, the schematic, the design development phases with, hand in hand with the construction manager for the project. I just want to make sure that there's the freedom to change without, change materials, say, during that phase, to get the budget to where it needs to be, but I fully understand that, you know, once it's agreed upon what it's going to be, and the contractor or someone else comes along and says, well, hey, this would be great if we did this, you've already drawn it from a construction document phase, you should be reimbursed to go back and do that. But I'm talking about, so in the construction document phase, I would agree, but prior to that, I would not agree.
I would agree with what you're saying. We are contractually bound to provide you a project at each phase that has a cost estimate that meets your budget. So as we go through each phase, and certainly through schematic design and design development phase, we'll be working closely with the city agencies as well as a construction manager to provide a design that will be within your budget, and looking at alternative materials through those phases as well.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
I just want to make a couple of quick observations, if I may. John, you're fine, thanks. Appreciate your comments. We had asked the architects, how long do they think it would take to draw this up and get it ready? And they projected in their early discussions, twelve to fourteen months. And we said, that's really good, but we can't live with twelve to fourteen months, because it pushes our schedule too far out, that we collapse our schedule for bookings, and then Mr. Dunover at the convention center goes into a panic fit because he hasn't got a building that he can pre-commit. So we've got to make a decision, for his purposes, so we can continue to book, that we will meet a certain deadline, and we've collapsed and compressed the schedule. We took what is estimated to be twelve to fourteen months and said, that's great, do it in eight, and that comes with a premium. Now, I want you to understand the magnitude of every day that that building's not open. Now, Mr. Canar, can I use, just for discussions, for academic purposes, twelve million dollars a year in TOT, annual? Is that a safe number for discussion purposes?
No, Mr. Mayor, more like about thirteen point two million.
I'm going to use twelve, okay? Let's assume twelve million dollars a year in TOT, and it's higher, because I'm lacking the information he has. So that means roughly, in a twelve-month period, every month, you're bringing in a million dollars, every week, you're bringing in a quarter of a million dollars, every day, you're bringing in about thirty-two to thirty-five thousand dollars. So every day that we haven't got the doors open, we're losing, based on current averages of twelve, and it's really thirteen, thirty thousand dollars a day, quarter of a million dollars a week. Now, we know that there's high and low parts of our season. We want this building up and operational on what day?
Christmas oh four.
Christmas oh four, kind of moving into a high season. So the TOT collection in January oh five, and the remaining parts of the season are probably the high days of revenue generation, so the quarter of a million dollars a week is probably a low number for a January, February, little more March collection. So if we're not open for the height of our season, we're losing dollars in a week's time that are hundreds of thousands of dollars. We're asking this firm to move fast, and we're going to pay a premium, because we know there's a reward at the end that we can gain. Every week we don't get the building operational, you're down a quarter of a million dollars, right? And he had mentioned he's about a five to ten percent premium. If it's a $2.5 million contract, 10 percent's a quarter of a million dollars. But we're asking him to compress twelve months into eight. So I just wanted to get you to frame what's being done here. We're asking this man to do a lot of work, and as they talked about, he's not done drawing yet, and we're pouring concrete. And we're pre-committing to a design that's not really figured out. So it's a complex operation. So I appreciate the complexity of the task before you and your firm, sir. Okay? So with that, what's the council's pleasure? I can tell you my pleasure. I'm going to move the minute order. Because I don't want to waste a day. Every hour, I calculated that too, every hour is a tremendous amount of money, so.
I'll second it.
I'd like to move the minute order and this project underway.
This is our next parking structure.
And a motion and a second. We got a Mr. Smoot.
Can I clarify your motion, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Does that include the clarifications that we've gone through, that the two I offered plus the ones that Mr. Mills has offered? I've taken copious notes on the answers and will incorporate.
I would think that the questions Mr. Mills have had clear enough explanations to incorporate, at least in my motion. Is the second concurring with that? And I do appreciate Mr. Mills bringing up the idea of trying to use local firms even for blueprinting.
That's very good. Thank you for doing that.
When you consider the amount of money in blueprinting fees that would go through here, if we can get a percentage of it, let alone all of it, it's a tremendous boost for our economy and the blueprinters' world. Okay?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to make the comment in reference to the additional costs that we are now having to go through to fast-track this along, is due to one particular reason. And it's due to the fact that we had to wait for an election in November to see whether we had a utility tax. Because if we didn't have a utility tax, we wouldn't have an expansion on the convention center. So I think people need to know, it was not staff's fault, it's not council's fault, it is the process that took place over the summer which delayed us in being able to put this thing forward.
Good point.
Yep, very good point. Okay, call for the question.
Call for the question, then.
All righty, Ms. Hodges.
Aye.
Mr. Mills.
Aye.
Mr. Oden.
Aye.
Ms. Rose Spurgeon.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor.
Aye.
I'm real pleased you guys are doing this for us. You're going to give us an exceptional building. I'm confident in that statement, sir. Thank you for coming down tonight. Mr. Dunn? Get some sleep, you look tired. You got a planner, you got a designer, you got an architect. Item fourteen, ordinance for second reading and adoption, first introduced on 12/402, an ordinance regarding change of zone from RGA 6 to PD 278. Counsel, what's your pleasure on this?
I'll move the ordinance for second reading.
Second. Does the clerk go read the title?
Absolutely.
You want to read Title Wave text?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, if you wouldn't mind.
This be an ordinance of the City of Palm Springs, California, amending the zoning map by approving a change of zone from RGA 6 to PD 278 for the property located at 3101 North Indian Canyon Drive, Zone RGA 6, Section 3.
Thank you.
Ms. Hodges.
Aye.
Mr. Mills.
Aye.
Mr. Oden.
Aye.
Ms. Rose Spurgeon.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor.
Aye.
It's 5-0, it's deemed unanimous. Item fifteen is this Palm Springs Skate Park, more importantly, the recreational amenity facility center.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Last week at the study session, we laid out for you the plans of the skate park and recreation center, including the swimming pool. What we're asking for you this evening is the authority now to take that plan and get it out on the streets for bid. I would note a couple caveats. What will also need to be included that you did not see last week was ADA-compliant restrooms, the appropriate sprinkler systems, and also the shade structure and lighting will have to be reconfigured somewhat in terms of where the poles are. With those changes, we would like to get it out onto the streets, so we can get it back to you within about six to eight weeks for contracts. I have city engineers here and several staff that can answer any specific questions that you may have.
Okay, counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mills.
I had a discussion yesterday, David and I, about the two toilet rooms for the skate park side, about them being multiple stall versus single.
We had that discussion, we looked at the plans, and Chris, what would be the best solution is to keep them single-stalled, but have them with a key. So in essence, whenever the skate park is open, there will be an attendant in that office facing the restrooms. Anyone would have to come and get a key from the attendant to use one of the stalls. There'll be a man, male and female. But if we made it multiple, it would really change the design and cause a much larger problem. So the easier answer would be to use a key entry system.
You know, I just thought about this, as opposed to a key, which a kid could take inadvertently with him and lose the keys, can we get someone from the control office? I don't know the sightlines. Push a button that releases the lock so the guy can go in and come out? You know what I'm talking about, Chris?
Electric strike?
So that you're not issuing a key?
Yeah, that's certainly available technology.
I don't know if you have to give somebody an ID to get a key or whatever, but it just, you still control them, but you're not worried about, where'd that kid go with the key? And now I haven't got a key, and she can't get in. So we can just look at that concept. I think we had a problem with those bathrooms being ADA-compliant on the small bathrooms.
That's correct. Now, they will be ADA-compliant. So we can expand them to be ADA-compliant, but the problem would be expanding them to be multiple stalls.
Multiple stall. One other question on 15A2, middle of the page four, talks about the cantilever, about including an alternate, if I'm not mistaken, for the can, the cantilever canopy system similar to the parking structure. Al, wasn't that like $18,000 a stall or something like?
Sixteen thousand dollars for the two-piece.
For the two-piece, based on how many we bought, too, right?
Is that the ones we use on the garage, I mean?
Right.
Parking structure?
Yeah.
I think we bought twelve, ten or twelve sets of them.
Yeah. I mean, it'd be great, but this is a, so are you pricing that out then? Is that what you're saying, you're going to, you will price that out? The Bird Air system, or? You don't know. I'm looking at the wrong guy.
What could happen, and I have to get with Ralph Rea, is that a system similar to that, and not specifically Bird Air product, could be proposed to keep that canopy-type architecture, you know, with the project because of the structural issues that came up when we did, when we looked at the plan and found that there were the columns within the skate park, which won't make the system work.
My suggestion was going to be, I'd hate to tie into Bird Air necessarily. It's a, you know, it's a very good product, and more of a building-type product than I think what we're looking at here, and that there are other systems that are a little less money that are available, so.
Okay.
Thanks, Marcus.
You have two-minute orders, is that correct?
That is correct.
For the skateboard park, and one for the poolhouse and swim center, concession stand improvements. Okay?
I'll move the two-minute orders.
Second.
Thank you, Jeanie. Mr. Mills, motion by Ms. Rose Spurgeon, and second by Mr. Mills. Any additional comments? Any questions? See none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We have a 5-0, it's unanimous. Item sixteen is parking limits and hours of enforcement, and I'll turn to Mr. Ready for a staff report.
Thank you. Members of council, we had a brief discussion last week at study session, and this is the action before you for formal action. I would ask Assistant City Manager Troy Bootsloff to give you the brief report, and also I'd ask Jerry Ogburn, Director of Downtown Development, to step to the microphone for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. If we wait a few more minutes, I can actually say good morning. In the interest of time, I can either offer you a staff report, or Mr. Ogburn or I would be happy to answer any questions you have regarding this item.
Everybody know what it is?
Yeah, I mean, we did this last week. I'll move the resolution.
Motion for approval by Ms. Rose Spurgeon. Is there a second? I'll cast a second. Any further discussion of questions?
Mr. Mayor, I wasn't here last week, but I know Mr. Oden had said that, again, we're piecemealing this, which was something we seem to do with parking. Do we have an ultimate plan as to what we're doing as far as looking at parking again and restrictions and time periods? Because we always seem to get into this bind.
If I could give a somewhat of an omnibus answer to that, we do this incrementally because there is not an easy answer, do it comprehensively. And what I am going to bring and suggest as we move into the next budget cycle, is a capital project, is continuing the, to get more parking, continue the Arenas Road, what we did on Arenas Road, on Ancilia, on through Arenas Road, on through from Indian to Palm Canyon, Palm Canyon to Bolardo. That creates some significant new numbers of spots. We have also created, of our own accord administratively, we have taken away a lot of red curb, for example, in front of Fashion Plaza. So we keep adding spots the best we can. This is in response to a dire need of the downtown restaurateurs to make sure that employees park where they should park, and the other spots are left for the customers. So yes, it's a stopgap measure because there's not an easy answer. Counsel, you have gone so far beyond in getting this parking structure, we've had tremendous, tremendous new parking spots. So you're doing a great job, and I got to tell you, so this is another incremental step to get us where we want to be. In the budget, you'll see another incremental step. If we could do two more parking garages, that would be great. But in the alternative of that, this starts to get us where we want to be. We're addressing the needs, we're putting out fires, but that's a function of the problem, the good kind of problem that we have.
That really doesn't answer my question.
It's an omnibus. They don't answer questions with an omnibus.
I mean, it's nice, and yes, we're looking forward to having additional parking spaces, but we're not talking about parking spaces here, we're talking about time periods. And we have, in the past, probably even prior to your being here, David, run into many problems when we put something on, we take it off, we do it here, then we don't do it here, and we get in a lot of trouble because we can't seem to make up our mind what we're doing. And that's my concern.
And that is specifically why, you know, Councilmember Hodges, you're correct, because even in my short tenure here, I've experienced that problem as well. So that's why we thought we could not just do this for the parking structure, it would have to be for all the lots. And then hopefully, that because this is at the tail end of the enforcement period, it would be almost transparent to 90 percent of the people who utilize parking spaces. The people it will affect is that, in theory, that second shift employee, which you have provided parking for on the top shelf of the parking structure. So you're right, it's a shell game. It's a shell game. It's not a perfect solution by any means.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mills.
Dana, to answer your question, Ron Stu, we didn't get into it last time, and I'm sure Jerry would agree with this. You never know what the average parker, to call them, to put a word, is going to do. I mean, you change the system, and they'll find, they'll find 15 different ways to do things that you didn't think they would do because you thought you were helping them or channeling them in a way that you want them to go, and it just doesn't happen. And you've experienced, before I got here, when you had the pay-for-parking shutter to think that, but, you know, that was a whole different.
That's what my concern is.
Oh, yeah, and.
I mean, I don't want to go back into the nightmare that we had before.
Exactly. And I just don't, I don't know, I mean, every time you alter something, it's going to create another problem somewhere, and you try to keep ahead of it as best you can, and it's just, it's difficult. So if we do the Arenas work and the Ancilia work, I'll guarantee you, we'll be back doing something else. I mean, it's just kind of how the animal is, but unfortunately, I share the frustration of Dana and Ron as well, and I'm sure Jerry, too.
Mr. Mayor.
It's road.
I think the timing issue is also what's important. I just don't think that, in terms of other projects that we have that will be coming down the pipe before long, that to make this change at this time, that carries, I think, the wrong message that I think a lot of people in the community will misinterpret and will be trying to explain it while we're trying to do the next step. And, I mean, it's no need in us belaboring this. I mean, we've said it, and if it happens, it happens, but I just don't think it's the right thing to do.
And if I could, before you comment, Jerry, just so everyone knows, this is not staff-driven nor council-driven. This comes from a request of downtown business folks. So again, there's no obligation to do it, this is just a request that's before you.
Jerry?
If I might try to frame this, and I don't think the moving target of parking is necessarily unique to Palm Springs, it's just part of the business. If you recall, last February, early in the year, we talked about, we had reached through this confusion and extension of a situation where we had unrestricted city parking lots. And they had become employee parking lots, and people's customers were suffering in that result. And we talked about, for years, there were, I don't know, a decade that I know of, there was a two-hour parking limit on our parking lots. And that seemed to work without a lot of complaint. Then when we got into the pay-for-parking cycle, to do a temporary fix to that, we went unrestricted, and that created some real problems. And we debated, we went to Main Street, we talked to a number of groups, and decided that really three hours would be better, and this came out of some of the restaurants saying, you know, it'd be nice to have a little longer so that people would come in and be able to shop in addition to coming to our restaurant. So I think we all debated, and the council decided to go to the three hours. We're not changing that. We're saying that should still, that we talked that issue through. All we're changing is that was enforced from 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And that's what we thought at the time would be the logical place to break it, to still allow more freedom of activity at night. The problem is the shift change, and this request has come out of restaurants who have day and night shift. And the point is, we solved the problem as far as employees parking in the city lots during the day shift, but if they come in at 4:05, they can still stay there until 2:00 AM, and that's the problem. We have a practical situation in the parking structure. One of the things you requested is a public-private partnership, and one of the ways we got there was to say we would lease that top level at a healthy rate of $120 a month per space. All of those spaces are committed, but the people that, and the restaurants who have leased those spaces or are about to lease those spaces, have gone to their staff, presented the proposal for parking on the third level, and they don't have any takers. Because their staff is saying, we can still park in the city parking lot at 4:05. So it's kind of like, it's an incremental change, we're only changing the last number from seven o'clock to eight o'clock. We're enforcing what we did a year ago, one hour longer. It's not a, it's not a big change, and it is upon the request of those businesses. And if we don't do it, we might as well take the gates off the parking structure and let it be open for public parking because it's not going to lease. I hate to be that blunt, but that's the case.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
A question to counsel, a note, actually. What is part of this resolution, what we have to do, even if you keep it at the same, we need to add, in theory, in essence, we need to add the parking structure to our municipal code as a structure that we can enforce in. So if you want to keep it as it is, we still need to pass this resolution, we will just change this hour back to what it is, seven.
Is that correct, Mr. Bootsloff?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, in doing the research for this item, we discovered that the downtown parking structure is not currently included in our list of designated parking facilities. As a result, the city attorney feels that we cannot legally enforce our current time restrictions in the parking structure. To effectuate this change, we would need to add the parking structure to the resolution establishing our designated facilities, which is currently included in the proposed resolution. So if the council desires not to extend the hours of enforcement from 7:00 to 8:00 PM, at the very least, staff would recommend that you include the downtown parking structure and just keep the hours the same as they are today, and that is from 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hodges.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to go along with this tonight, but I have to say, I don't particularly like it. But otherwise, I just have a question. like it. But otherwise, I just have a question. How does, how do the downtown merchants get an item on a study session one week and an item on an agenda the next week when we, as council people, can't even get that to happen?
I would like to respond to that, Dana, because if that is happening, then I need to spend a lot more time with the council members. And so I will make sure that your requests get on there. On this particular issue, this was driven by the requirement of Mercado Plaza for valet parking. Now, if I didn't do it immediately, the citizens may one day just find that those spots back in the back of Mercado were designated for valet, which would, in theory, potentially cause a real concern. So in my judgment, I put it on the agenda so we could have this discussion, so the public would know what we were doing. And this was a byproduct of that discussion, and that's why it's on. But in, that is the explanation. Thank you. At this late hour.
Mr. Mayor?
Call for the question.
Mr. Mayor, I'll call for the question, but I'd like to make one statement brief.
Well, make the statement and then call for the question. How's that?
Is that, I can't think of one of these actions that we've taken that hasn't been driven by the downtown in some respect. So, and we still had to come back to the same thing. Nothing's new. And I'll call for the question.
Call for the question.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
No.
Ms. Ross Burchan?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. Passes, is that 4-1?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you. Mr. Reddy, are there any additional legislative items, sir?
No.
Any added starters? Under reports or requests, any additional reports or requests by council at this time? Thank you. Item 18 is the treasure's investment report as of October 31st of this year. Counsel, any questions or comments? Duly noted. Under 18B, we have already made our pro temp selection for the year. Any public reports or requests? Any staff reports or requests? Thank you, sir. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be January 2nd. That is off the normal Wednesday night calendar because January 1st falls on a Wednesday, and it is a holiday. So our rules indicate we follow the next day. So we'll meet on Thursday, January 2nd, at 7:00. And our next study session will be on January 8th at 7:00. Both will be preceded by 5:30. For all practical purposes and actual purposes, this is the last meeting of the year.
Actually, actually, that January 8th is not a study session. That'll be a cabinet meeting.
Council Cabinet?
Actually, uh-huh.
And I'll amend my comments stating that the council cabinet will be meeting on January 8th. This is the last meeting of the year. We do not meet over the holiday week. So on behalf of the entire city council, we wish you all a happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor?
It is now 12 minutes after the hour of midnight.
And, and, Mr. Mayor, let me thank you. It's certainly been a pleasure spending my anniversary with all of you.
That's the way I, that's the way I planned it, David. Thank you. Good night.